All right. Okay, we're going to be opening the meeting for the planning board. Now, everyone should realize that this is being recorded, so there will be audio and it will be broadcast. So if you have anything to say, just keep that in mind. The, yeah. So, the first on the agenda is Gary Hawkins from 179 North Street. Okay. Come on up.
I have a little handout.
You have a microphone right there.
Do I need the microphone?
Yes, you absolutely.
It's for the cable.
Doesn't amplify it in here. It's only for cable.
Turn it on now. Get the little gr-
Why don't you sit next to Michelle?
Oh, you could sit next to Michelle here and you won't have to hold the microphone.
I won't, bye.
There's a microphone right here.
This one right here.
So you don't need that.
I should stand for my presentation, don't you?
Yeah, it always helps. Do you have anything that you have to hang or do you have things to distribute?
No, I have, I have items to pass out.
Here.
Okay. I have, there's two, 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 I think there's six, there are six sets. I'm one short. I don't mean to hurt anyone's feelings.
We can share.
Okay.
One will be installed with.
This is, yeah. This is top and bottom, top and bottom, top and bottom. Okay. Okay. Two, should be two. I guess it's not enough for these things. Two.
They look to me, no, they're different.
It's a little, we show the differences.
The Union in North?
I'm not sure exactly.
Can you share?
Yep. Let me see. Gravel base all around, Nature Trail.
Yeah.
What?
Thank you.
Can I keep one then?
No, it's the King Street.
I have another if anyone would like it.
I don't see any road.
We're fine. We're okay. Okay. I'm Gary Hawkins. I live in Sherburne and I own Al's Welding.
Ah, okay.
Sure. And I've been there for 15 years and I want to make a change. I wanted to buy in the, in the new industrial park around the corner, but it just didn't, it didn't happen for me. And the Nature Trail has got something to do with it, too. I came here and protested a little bit at the, when they wanted to build the Nature Trail as a quid pro quo from the developer to the town. And I was the one that's gonna, they're gonna walk behind my place.
Can you make sure that microphone is turned on?
It is.
Oh, okay. Well, talk into it then, yeah.
And so that, nothing came to fruition about the Nature Trail. Then all of a sudden, about a month ago, a guy came in with a chainsaw and we were at the shop and he said that the Nature Trail was gonna go in. So I, my original complaint was, not a complaint, but observation was that the people on the Nature Trail are not gonna wanna see the backside of my shop. It's, it's not that nice looking and there's equipment, there's welding machines and such and I just know they're gonna be horrified and they'll have a different idea of what I should be doing than what I have, than my ideas. So we went into action and started cutting some trees down to put up a stockade fence. And I have a stockade fence in the front, as according to the bylaws, I believe, I had to have it anyway. Goes down the side and I'm gonna separate from behind the building between us and the Nature Trail and then come down to the road beside the woman beside me with some arborvitae or some kind of plants, 'cause I think the building department said that I would, I should do it with plantings, 'cause we had taken some trees down. So I had a cease and desist and so in the meantime, my plans just got a little bit more, more ideas of what I wanted to do. And I thought, since I was in for a penny, in for a pound, I might as well not just cut the trees down, but grade it off a little bit so it goes around the building and so I can drive around the building and, and shield it with the, with the arborvitae and with the stockade fence from the people that I'm gonna offend. And I have a, I have my little drawing here that I had in mind and I would like to be able to do that, but the building department said that I cannot do that. I cannot make significant changes inside or outside my building because I was a non-compliant, a non-conforming usage in a residential zone.
Inside and outside?
Inside or outside, I believe you said.
I can see outside. I don't think they're accurate on the inside.
Okay.
But it's not an issue there.
I mean, when I, when I got there 15 years ago, the corner didn't look the same as it looks now. I mean, if you guys remember, there was, in Wilmington, there was a big boat across the street that was probably on the map somewhere.
I do remember that.
And it was a pretty humble house beside me. Al's Welding didn't look particularly good. My house that I owned there didn't look great. And, and the, the whole road plan was, has been changed since then. So things are more, and more on display than they would have been 15 years ago. So, anyway, I would like to do my little proposal here and I don't think it's gonna change the appearance of, of the location. I think it's gonna look the same. I, you know, I try to keep it painted and we've got some paving in the front and I don't park, I try not to park stuff there. I mean, I am an offender once in a while, or sometimes, but I'm trying to be compliant.
Just one quick question. You passed out two different documents, but I'm not really noticing a difference between the two.
There's none. Well, this one's the bigger, the bigger, the first one shows, shows the location on North Street and the other one didn't show it, so.
This house here, is that the White Cape or?
No.
Is there a house in between?
No. That's the dark, as you face from North Street, the house on the right is my house on the right that I own.
Okay.
And-
This is his house.
This shows two lots. Jeez, I'd love to have two lots if I could. Maybe, maybe I should petition to sell off the lots. That would be excellent. But, I guess that wasn't that funny.
Is that lot fairly flat or is it sloped one way or the other?
It's fairly, it's flat. There's, no, there's just a slope in the back where the, from the Nature Trail down to the back of the, of the building.
Okay. So the Nature Trail will be elevated, a little higher.
A little higher.
What's a little? Two feet, 20 feet to me?
No, three, four feet.
Three, four feet, okay.
It connects around, it goes around and goes along the back of all the houses that are in the vicinity.
And I was gonna take off a little bit of the slope and lean the slopes come down so I could make the turn without having to go up and down.
It connects with the open spaces behind it.
How high is the fence you're proposing to put on?
I would put a six-foot fence, a regular six-foot stockade fence, I would think.
Colonel.
I, I don't know what the idea is about, or the law is about.
Lazy loopers?
I have a 12-foot setback. I, I'm not really sure why I did that. I just, I come up with an arbitrary number, whether I, I could, could I put it right on the edge of the Nature Trail? I mean, is that a, what do you think about that?
For fence, I mean, I think I-
Put fence on a property line, so. The only, if you're gonna put it on the property line and have a survey or stake it out, so.
It's all survey. That's what put us, that's what put us into, into great distress, to see, when the guy starts pounding the stakes in, then the guy follows it up with a chainsaw. Now we know it's for real. It's not, it's not a joke anymore.
Then you don't have to stake it out.
Now, is there, what is there in zoning that has to do with a commercial use in a residential zone? Is there some sort of a buffer that has to be established along the property line? That has to be planted with a double row of, oh, a single row?
It's actually a single row of evergreen trees.
That's why you were asked to put the arborvitae in, because it has to, there has to be a buffer.
That's why I wanna put the arborvitae in there.
So it would be on both sides?
No, I own the other side.
Well, it's still a residential house and, and next to a commercial property.
Well, the fence has been there for 15 years. I don't know if we have any address.
Well, you're planning on changing what's done here, right? Didn't you say that you were changing what's inside here? You're increasing parking or something?
Yes. This is already, this is already here, the fence between the front here and here between the house. And then this is new. And then the arborvitae and that, yeah.
So.
I should, I should have put-
So in other words, one, one of the four sides has a fence at the moment?
Yeah, and the front and two, and the front.
And the front, two of the four sides. Yeah, yeah, okay. Fair enough.
And the fence is adjacent to the house, I guess? The fence is adjacent to the house?
Yes.
And not adjacent to it?
It was all done-
Between the-
It's similar right on the, it's almost on the lot line.
As you drive by.
I didn't, I didn't tape it out, but it's close to the lot line of, of that lot. But there, lots have been combined anyway.
So.
That was a surprise to me, to see one, two, three, four.
Well, what was the cease and desist for, actually?
Cutting trees down.
Well, you can cut trees down. Is there a specific reason?
That's what I thought. I said, well, I didn't wanna fight, you know? Well, here's the letter.
Oh, I, did I get a copy of the letter?
Yeah, it's in your package.
There it is.
Storage.
And he suggested about the, since we were taking trees down to replace them with the evergreens, with the green growth.
Oh, no, you shall be expanded. Okay, that's, that's, yeah.
So the footprint for the, the activity that presently is taking place?
Right.
Are you really expanding it as a result of this? Where you're doing the tree clearing, you're gonna have vehicular activity?
I was gonna be able to drive behind the building, where now I cannot drive behind the building. There's trees there and it goes a little bit of a hump. I mean, if we cut the trees down, we could do it, but then we'd be driving up and down over the hump. I wanted to take the hump out and make it all level on both sides of the building, so it'll all be the same height.
And would there be any base as far as pea stone or something on the ground?
Gravel or, or ground-up asphalt or something like that, you know, would be.
Well, if it's not paved, you can't park vehicles back there. Are you planning on parking vehicles back there?
Well, it's just equipment. I mean, there's, there's tires on them. I'll pave it then.
Yeah, well.
I don't, you know, I thought I would, I thought it was not to pave. I thought the idea was not to pave.
Well, the, the problem with vehicles is they drip oil. So if paving will allow it to be directed someplace so it can be captured.
Won't go back into the groundwater.
There's, there's a, there are no trucks, but there are some welding, there are welding machines.
I'm kinda lost on where, where are you going with this? Maybe, Jeff, if you ask your questions, I might be able to give you some direction.
Yeah, so, so the footprint of activity will expand as a result of the tree clearing. There'll be some activity. And do you see the additional footprint, if you will, being used to, to get from point A to point B? Or do you actually see that area being used to, for parking these vehicles, this, this equipment?
I haven't, I haven't expanded my, you know, my equipment in years. It's just, it would be nice to be able to drive in, back a piece up and drive on, back them in and then be able to drive out the other side instead of, you know, shoehorning them in on the right-hand side. That was, this would just give me an opportunity to be a little neater and, and at the same time, I, I am concerned about the, the Nature Trail. I mean, I think I have every, I have every right to be concerned about the Nature Trail. I mean, there's gonna be people there that, that I don't know, that, that don't know me and, and that are gonna have, might have some opinions that, that they don't, don't like what I have.
The reason why I asked the questions is because, as Steve pointed out, if you get into vehicles or equipment parking, you get into the requirement for some impervious surface, which means that unless you're putting something overhead, you get into the whole issue of storm water, you know, how are you containing, collecting, you know, managing the water, which could potentially be contaminated from drippings or-
We thought that they have the, have the gravel would be preferable to the pavement because the water could go down through it.
The pavement would, basically, what's done is the pavement would pitch somewhere where the water that might have the oil would be collected and dealt with. So we're, we're trying to help you.
That's fine. I'm just gonna say that oil is not a deal with me. Oil is not a, we don't have, we're not putting oil up in the backyard. Anyone would be free to come down and look around, you know?
Well, the oil referred to is drippings from the equipment.
Right.
As opposed to any oil you're spreading on the ground.
Right. But I mean, the equipment is not, is not dripping to any extent and, and we, you know, we're careful what we do.
So you're not going to expand, or let's use a different word, we're not gonna increase the number of, and pieces of equipment or-
There's nothing's changing. I'm not, actually, I, I may be going down, I may be going downhill instead of uphill, but it's just the-
So the expansion in the building inspector's letter is basically expanding the cleared space somehow.
Right, right. I just thought while we were there and while we were cutting the trees down and we're gonna put the stockade fence up, jeez, maybe we should just throw this out.
See, now I, I read his objection to being that he's expanding the storage area.
The use, yeah.
Which, which the right side of the property in the original site approval was designated as his storage area. And so now, since he's saying he's going to increase his storage area around the other sides of the building, that's what I'm seeing as bullets.
I think that's right. I believe that's, that would be correct.
Yeah. So it's not that he's expanding equipment, it's not that he's expanding the building, but he is expanding that storage area to a larger area around the building. So that's one part of it, whether or not we can allow him to do that. The other question is about, I guess, the trees and the fence. I think there's kinda two separate issues to address.
The, the existing storage area that, that you have, what's the surface of that? Is it paved? Is it gravel? Is it?
It's gravel and, and, and ground-up, ground-up asphalt.
So, I mean, in my opinion on the screening of the building, regardless of what you use it for, that, to me, I wanna table that item for a minute and just more talk about the screening of your site, to sort of protect yourself and add some privacy from the Nature Trail as well as, you know, add a buffer of trees. I like that idea. I think that that's a, a good idea and I think that's good for your site, I think that's good for the Nature Trail. Not a certain about the expansion of the storage area.
Well, now, what you've been saying is not really that you want expansion of storage, the storage area. What you want is just to be able to drive around the building. So you just really wanna go, what's that?
He's saying park them there, too.
Well, that would all be on the right-hand side, though, wouldn't it?
Well, if I, if I, I would use the liberty to park there without, I had this new area and I could back the stuff in because we're kinda jammed up on the right-hand side. I mean, we've been surviving with it and it's not that I couldn't. This seemed like the prime moment to act.
Because any, any place where there's parking involved, it's in zoning, that it has to be paved. The only time it doesn't have to be paved is, is if it's a recreational use.
Or we grant a waiver.
Is that?
Or we grant a waiver.
It's a variance, isn't it? Well, neither in nor there. It's not applicable in this, this case. But I guess what I'm having a hard time with is that he's not really changing his operations, his, his equipment or anything else. The existing equipment is being parked on a gravel area right now. Anything, you know, like a vehicle, I've gone by there, it's normally parked on the driveway at the end of Union.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I've seen. I went by there today myself. I, you know, when you get to these pre-existing non-conformings, I think you have to kinda look at it a little differently than hard and fast on the existing site plan, you know, that's adopted years later. Right. But this is also a good time to address that all equipment should be stored out of sight, on the side or rear, because it is not stored out of sight. It's always out in front of the building. Always. I drive by it twice a day. And like Michelle said, you know, the screening's good. Maybe we need to expand on that screening.
Well, not to, not to disagree, but I'm gonna say 75% or more of the time, there is no equipment there. There's a truck there. And I would think that I have, I have-
Well, a large generator parked in the front of the building, that's-
But I mean, how often does that happen?
All the time.
Well, I, I think we could monitor it and I don't think, I don't think it was, it is that much. Does anyone else have an opinion on that? I mean, does anyone else drive by?
They don't drive by it twice a day like I do.
But there's a truck there.
I've seen it there and I haven't seen it there when I drive by, I mean.
I, I, I monitor it myself and I tell my guys, put that stuff away because we're gonna get in trouble with the planning board. And, and, but I, I really kinda apologize too much for the truck. I mean, that's, that's part of America. It's, it's my truck.
The truck is always parked on the apron.
Yeah. And, and, you know, it's, I don't think it's equipment, I think it's, it's a truck. I mean, the guy across the street, the woman beside me's got a truck there. Did I do it on the street? It's my truck. I don't know what to think about that.
I don't think the truck's the issue, right?
No, the truck isn't the issue. It's the equipment that, that's parked out there. That's what the issue is.
And I'm gonna say that I try very hard, since I had a, Bob, what's his first name? Bob Bullock gave me a, a wake-up call some years ago. Someone, one of my friends left a piece of equipment there and ruined it for everyone. And Bob Bullock sent me the nasty letter and I think we've been pretty compliant, you know, since then. I mean, sometimes there is something there overnight, you drop it, you pick it up, but I try. Anyway, I try.
Well, I don't really have an issue with him being able to access around the building. Does anybody else have an issue with that?
No. I don't.
I don't either. I think it's just, I wouldn't wanna make the non-conforming use, more non-conforming by giving you now a larger footprint for more equipment, more vehicles to potentially be stored on the site, particularly without the-
I'm not expanding. I'm 70 years old and I'm, I'm out of the picture, you know?
And, and I understand and I trust that, but, you know, without bringing some specificity into, you know, number of vehicles or something like that, if we did that, then that might address those concerns, if there's some number that we can agree on.
And then, and then that might carry over to a follow-up meeting.
You know, I'm not sure we can address that, you know, this evening, but that might be a reasonable way to ensure that a non-conforming use doesn't become more non-conforming. That's the wrong direction. But we want it, you know, we wanna support you and support your business.
But I could see that, Jeff, so long as it's, I think, an equal quid pro quo, that we expand the screening to, you have a very high-profile site. And if we could find a way to screen-
For 50 years it's been there, though.
I understand.
Or 60 years, I don't know.
I, I'm not gonna doubt you, okay? But, but the point is, the same way as Steve sees it every single day and Greg sees it occasionally and I see it occasionally, it's, it's omnipresent, whether we like it or not. So I guess, we'd try, we'd like to see if we could work with you regarding the screening.
Well, I wanted to get out of there. I wanted to move up the street to the, to the, you know, to the-
Shire?
Yeah. And it just didn't work out, you know? So now I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm still here and, or there and I'm just trying to make things a little better. And then the Nature Trail, the quid pro quo given to the town by the guy who had, had a dog in the fight, affects me. And I think that should be taken into account, too.
Sure. Well, there's a, there's a proposal that was put to you. It says, you know, if you could specify, listen, I have four welders and three this and two of that and that's what I'm gonna store and I'm not gonna store anymore. My wife.
We need a mic.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, dear, dear.
I was just thinking, if there's one piece of equipment, I know it, sitting out there where everyone can see it, well, I know the way the guys operate, if they could come around this building and park, where Gary's talking about coming around, it would be, be behind a screen and the offensive piece of equipment would not be seen. So it seems like-
It's a win-win, guys.
That's what-
We're all taking that into consideration.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing. I think we just wanna make sure it doesn't become-
We're digesting it for the first time here, so.
You know, twice as mu, twice as many vehicles, twice as much equipment, now you've taken a non-conforming situation, you've made it twice as non-conforming. That, that's what we just need to protect everyone from that scenario.
And it's not just you. It's if you sell.
Right.
What's, what's the following use gonna be?
Well, the new guy's gonna fight his way through the deal. So I think that-
Well, there will be restrictions. That's, that's what it is.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, I just think that if there's gonna be equipment, that there should be some sort of a paved pad that withers some collection of the, of the runoff. I mean, that's-
And you're proposing to put gravel base all, gravel all around?
Well, I thought that was the, the more acceptable choice.
Is it true that the only piece of equipment that has oil and therefore could leak oil is the one or two trucks you have now?
No, they're, they're innocent.
I understand, but you, I'm, I'm sorry, how, how many trucks do you have now?
I have, I have only one down there.
One, okay. I, I don't know anything about pieces of welding equipment, but I assume they don't have oil in them? I mean-
They do. They're, they're, they have, they have wheels and plates, you know, and registration plates.
But is there oil other than the lubricating oil in the axle? I mean, is there, does welding equip, it's-
It doesn't have an engine, right?
Gas, it's, right? There's no-
It's an engine. It has an engine, yeah, it has an engine.
It is an engine.
We all have engines.
All right.
I've got some air compressors and, and some welding machines.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
But he only has gravel now. What would have been the rule when this was put in? Was gravel acceptable or should it have been paved or?
Probably back then.
Back then.
Six years ago, yeah. There was no requirements, I'm sure.
They didn't even have stormwater separators and things like that back when it was put in.
These are people, people, not, not this gentleman, but used to dump hazardous waste out in the farms and woods.
Right.
It's 60 years ago.
Right.
But how large an area would you require to be set aside for parking and storage of vehicles or storage of equipment or things like that?
I didn't take the square footage of it, but there is, let's see, 50 by 30, 1,500 square feet on, there's 1,500 square feet on the existing, I would say. And then on the other side, it would be 30, no, a little bit more, 36 by 50.
Straight back.
1,500 and, and 300, 1,800 square feet there and we would add probably 1,200, 1,200 square feet on the other side.
What if we looked at it from this angle? He's not increasing the pieces of equipment. He needs it for circulation reasons to get those things around. If he's not going to park those circulatory vehicles and he's not increasing the number of pieces therefore stored, which he's entitled to and has today, can we find a way to look at it from that angle?
I'm not certain they're saying they're not gonna store them back there. I'm hearing them say they're gonna park that, you know, objectional piece of equipment back there, that he doesn't like to have to squeeze them in, it'd be nice to be able to spread them out. It'd be nice to be able to spread them out. So, I mean, if it were for access and not storage, I'd agree with you. But I, I don't think we're all on the same page with, I think it probably will be used for storage.
Yeah, it, it, it just would be so much easier for us.
Can we trade it off? Can we trade off one side to the other?
I think he wants them both.
We've got him now stuck in-
Storage all the way around. Yeah, yeah, the, but it, it, is it mainly circulation or is it storage all the way around that you really want?
A little bit of both. I could take the things, the offending vehicles that are in the way and I could make the swing and then back up and drop them off. So every, you know, there would be less on this side than there are than there would be, you know. And that way we could still drive around, back up to something and take it out without having to take the forklift and start shuffle, do the Chinese shuffle there.
I think the limitation on pieces is probably the only way to really get to, get to the intent of-
Gary, here's my concern and my biggest worry for you, and believe it or not, my probing questions are for your benefit.
Okay.
And that is, I'm trying to find a way to see if there's a way for you not to pave and therefore put in collection pieces and because it's, you know, gas and oil, separators and things like that. Trying to find a way that you can come out of this a little better than it could go. So we're trying to-
Okay.
We're trying to, you know, he just dropped it on us. So we're digesting it on the fly here.
I bought a lot up in the Shire area. Would I be, I would be faced with all these same concerns.
Absolutely. They'd be built in already, though.
Yeah, I mean, I can't build a stockade and drive in it, close the door behind me and keep the Indians out.
We wouldn't even be discussing gravel if you were up there.
Okay. But now, look where I am, little country fellow, stuck in the back there, you know?
Steve, is it acceptable to you, as Peter suggests, and to create a document that says we store presently X, Y, and Z and?
Well, I personally think that if, if it's being done, it's, it's not what's acceptable now. If, if you only need a certain number of square feet for, to capture what it is we're concerned about, then we should probably build in the number of square feet that we need that would have, that would collect stormwater. It's the same thing as what is down on David, David Road? Is it David?
Probably.
Yeah, there's a, there's a company down there that deals with, um, Geologic. They have something very similar to what you have. It's not entirely paved, but any equipment that they have on their site is stored on paved, a paved area that has drainage associated with it. So that's also an existing industrial.
So what that, what that would do, if we went in that direction, what that would do is it solves his circulation problem. It doesn't solve his storage problem in the sense that he's now confined to the same, maybe even smaller footprint for storing his stuff than he's using today.
Well, it depends on the design, though. I mean, I mean, if he's clearing larger, a larger space, then maybe it would be easier.
If he's going to put the storage out back, it's, it's likely to be, at best, the equivalent square footage of what he's using today for, for storage.
But if it's, if it's in the back, then they have the paving in the back with the stormwater collection.
You, you could pave a twenty-foot wide strip around the perimeter of the side in the rear and put the equipment on that. The problem is, once you go to pavement, then you have to have a collection device and you have to have some kind of a separator device. So you're talking ten thousand dollars' worth of structures plus pavement. You know, it's, it's twenty thousand dollar or something tag item now. You could pave it and say have it shed into like a bioswale. That's not quite as good as a separator structure, but it's better than he's got now. It'll take up some space. I don't know how the geometry works, but.
The welding equipment, what dimensionally, about how long are those units?
All, all sizes. I do, uh, big welding and small welding. And some of them are tandem axle trailer and some of them are single axle trailers that, you know, a little bigger than that with a fork on.
So they can be, you know, from five feet or so to, what, ten, fifteen?
Fifteen, fifteen feet.
So, I mean, what a lot of, what, what companies migrate to eventually is, um, the understanding that they're better off sheltering the containment area rather than deal with contaminated water and having to pump it into a device and potentially create hazardous waste, what have you. So they'll put, you know, maybe you can, I'm not familiar with your building, whether you could extend something, some type of awnings or something off the, the building to-
I've been terrified even to think about something like that. This seems like so much more reasonable aesthetically than, than modifying the building. I mean, if that's the answer to-
Well, I'm not familiar with your building. I'm just, I'm just saying that, I mean, we did this at the landfill, right? There was issues with, you know, water and such and contaminated water and the town made an investment to reduce the amount of water and therefore reduce the amount of waste. So there, you know, I'll, you know, I personally wouldn't mind exploring some of the stuff with you. I mean, my background is in, you know, chemical engineering and running chemical plants. So if I could be of any assistance in terms of coming up with some ideas.
My feeling is that I've, I'm gonna, I try to, I want to offend as least number of people as possible where it looks pretty much like it was when I bought it. And the changes, radical changes, I, I thought might create quite a stir.
So if you're truly worried about aesthetics and screening and privacy and you really don't want to be dealing with paving and engineered solutions-
You bet.
For stormwater-
You bet.
Separation, you're probably best off just leaving your little gravel lot just like you have it right now.
Uh-huh.
Don't change anything except putting up your fence and your arborvitae and you're done.
Right.
That's it. You don't get any extra access or egress. You don't get any extra storage. You just get your privacy and aesthetics and your equipment is your equipment.
Well, Tom, what's required for a bioswale for, for the, I mean-
Well, I mean, it, it's just the way you construct it. You need a couple of feet of organic infused soil. You can or can't have a liner on the bottom. It depends on how it's designed. But the simple thing is overdig it by a couple of feet, put in some organic soil, some plants to uptake the nutrients, and that's probably a lot better than he's got now. So if you shed water from pavement into that, it's a low-tech solution. And I think for the low, what I presume is the low intensity, I haven't seen the place. It's better, it's an improved existing condition.
Right. It improves the existing. How many, how many pieces in total, top end?
Some stuff is out, but it varies day by day, too, you know?
Average.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. There's probably a dozen, a dozen pieces.
Twelve pieces with motors?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're worried about leaks. That's it?
Right.
It's not like you're changing it.
Well, anyone's welcome to come by without announcement. I mean, you know, if you, if there's any concerns and I don't think you'll find anything. You're, you're my neighbor, I guess, and you're welcome to stop, you know?
Well, I live down on King Street.
Well, there's oftentimes, maybe not someone around, but, you know, it's poke around. Feel free. I've got nothing to hide.
Well, Michelle's suggesting, you know, that's pretty straightforward.
Right.
You don't need our permission to put up trees and put up a fence, right?
Yeah, I think he does. That's what Bob Bullock's letter said.
I thought, I thought he was clearing the land.
That's for the expansion, right.
He was starting to clear the land for this added storage accessory.
Oh, just put up the fence. No, do the rest, but I think he wants-
Put up a fence and put up the trees. You don't need-
We'd have to issue some kind of a decision, okay, I guess.
You don't need our permission to do that.
Does there anyone want to consider it? Consider more? I mean, that's, that's like kissing your sister, you know, that, that answer. I mean, I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate.
That is an odd expression.
Well, I appreciate the, the answer, but it-
I'll speak for myself.
I'd rather fight than-
If we can-
I got that already.
If we can agree on a number of vehicles so that we're not making the situation more nonconforming than it already is.
Yeah.
I'll speak for myself that I wouldn't be too concerned about whether they're all parked in one place or another as long as there's sufficient, you know, buffer in terms of fencing, arborvitae, what have you. That's me personally. But there would have to be a limit in terms of the number of, you know, vehicles, welding machines, what have you, so that we don't have now twice the number of-
Right. It's not my, it's not my intent.
Half over there. Now you've essentially made a nonconforming situation more nonconforming. So-
Put a number.
That's me personally.
You put a number on it?
Well, how far is it from your building to the, the fence? From here to here?
There's some numbers.
Fence in the back?
Front to back?
From here to here, yeah.
Probably fifty feet. Oh, from there?
From here to here.
Thirty-six and, uh, well, there's no fence now, but it would be like forty feet or something like that.
From here to the fence?
Yeah.
So from the back of your building to the property line at the nature trail, it's fifty-two feet?
I would guess.
Okay. So you have forty-foot wide piece there?
Yeah.
Because, you know, like, the, the, the concern that I have about trying to bring it up, bring it up to what's required now, and that is if, if you could get all the equipment that you have parked in the back here, I, I would even be tempted to say to move the fence back a little bit. And, and, and I like the idea of the bioswale, to be able to have it run off the pavement. You don't have to actually collect it in an oil-water separator. You just have it go into a bioswale and have it treated by plants in that area.
But you're looking for it to, to be paved the whole place, though.
No, no, no. I only want where you're parking stuff. So it could be, it could be gravel all the way around, but say that you're going to designate the back fifteen feet or something with, with pavement and then, then have another couple of feet to be able to have a bioswale so that all the, all the runoff can go into that. I mean, that's a good way to, to sort of have a compromise on, on treating the runoff.
So I need a, I need an engineer, I would say.
That's right.
I mean, is, do you feel as though that's a-
I feel it's overkill. I'm, I'm, I'm with the-
Well, this is what we've done with other people that have done comparable projects.
Fair, fair. I still think it's overkill.
Well, if there's a dozen pieces of, of equipment back there. But you know what? There's a dozen people there now. That's why Steve- I don't think there's a dozen there now. Well, I don't know. I'm just taking-
He's just saying whatever is there.
If there's one, there's thirty. It's, I mean, it's-
Whatever's there is there.
It's there. And-
Not any worse than it is today.
Right.
That's where I am.
Well, you said that, that they got wheels and plates, therefore you're paying excise tax, right?
Yeah.
In the town of Norfolk?
Take the fifth on that one.
What does he mean?
No, no, the-
I kind of have mixed feelings about it because it's, you know, it's what's there. It's no worse than what's there today. But we know, we know a lot more today than we know when this was allowed. And so if he's coming in saying, gee, I can benefit from this and I want to make some changes and it would help me, well, should we do it in a way that maybe serves our community, serves our environment a little bit better?
That's, that's fair, but that's in conflict with the other solution that you offered to him, which is put the fence up and go away.
Well, it's not in conflict.
No, no, no. I'm saying if you don't want to spend any money at all on, on mediation and you weren't looking to come and get that kind of a feedback, then you still have the option to put your fence up and your trees up and that's fine. If you're looking to, if your goal, I'm really trying to get to the root of what his goal is. And if your goal is that your site's not working for you and you really need different setup for parking your equipment and storing your equipment, then present it that way. Don't present it as the nature trail and don't present it as buffering from my neighbors. Present it as it's not working for me. I want to change it.
Absolutely. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't try, I'm not trying to say that- Nature trails were generated my actions, but I want to make it work for me in a different way and park my equipment this way around it and pick them up and take them out as I go. I'm not trying to say that I'm doing anything to try to help Norfolk.
Tom, taking it a step further with your bioswale.
Just get to the root of it.
Can you, does it work with the reconstituted or reclaimed asphalt? If the reclaimed asphalt, which has been used there before and currently based on his representation, will that shed it to the bioswale?
Probably not. Um, we could try to, I'm just trying to think. If you had some way to increase the permeability of the soil without necessarily paving it, it would shed better.
Why would you increase the permeability of the soil if you want to shed?
So it would shed into the bioswale.
Impermeable.
Impermeable. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
I do listen to you, Tom.
Thank you. I don't listen to myself, apparently.
Of all of us.
I know.
I can't listen to myself, so, yes.
I knew what he was meaning.
Thank you, Greg.
Again, you know, there's a handful of these pre-existing nonconforming sites here, there and everywhere. And our goal is to try to find a way so the, you know, the existing businesses can move forward somehow. And that's, that's where I'm at. I think a good middle ground between the structures was Tom's suggestion. And I don't think it's that costly. And to be honest with you, I think, I'd like to go through the site and take a look and I'd like to know some measurements as well on existing storage.
Oh, yeah.
So we can have a better idea. You're dropping a lot on us for a first night.
I just, I didn't think it was that hard.
Unfortunately, you know, when you're in a residential area.
Yeah, everything's hard. But you're welcome to come. Welcome to come and, and look and see if we've spilled any oil and-
And we're not, you know, Steve, he does that. We don't. We're more worried about what's going to happen after.
Any judgments you want to make, you know, and, um, I'm-
I think that what he's mentioning about making it more impermeable, your issue of using the existing gravel, I, I saw on this old house that they would spray it with a, with an asphalt coating that would- Would seal it. Is that something that would be reasonable?
Yeah, that's, that's the old McCadam approach. Might be worth a try.
You could just grade what's, what's there and towards the swale and then seal it.
I mean, the sad thing is this, by the time they spray it, you're probably putting more petroleum underground.
No, but it's going to be more than ever drips out of the wall.
What about if they scraped it back, put a clay, a clay surface and then covered it? Put, or even mix clay into the cer- rototill it in. Get some clay and rototill it in.
All sorts of ideas. I'll let you, Gary, we're, I'm going here with this is, is I'm trying to find a way on a cost-effective basis for you, you know, to avoid an asphalt job and, you know, obviously a structures job, which we've kind of moved past that at least, if it can work. So we're working through just for-
Let's be realistic. No. Uh, I'm at the end of my career. Something's going to happen down there. It's going to get sold. And, and then I, I don't want to put a whole bunch of money in this thing and, and not be able to recoup by money. I've been paying the high taxes because I'm nonconforming. I've been giving my reports, what I do with the place and all that. And this may be, I'm looking for a temporary fix and, and who knows if, if someone else buys it. I'm sure they're going to have an awful time having a business there with the tone.
Gary, but this is more scary than what, than what we're looking at right now because there'll be an expectation of what you have there then as to what they can expect on the purchase. And that's exactly what concerns us.
Yeah. Well.
You know, and as far as the taxes go, we're the supply side of the equation. We're not the spending side, so. Yeah, we're not, we're not necessarily concerned about you. We're always looking down the road. So if it's sold, we just don't want to have created a monster for ourselves by, by saying, oh, go, go right ahead. Put gravel all the way around it to the property lines and, and then have someone come in and park fifty machines.
Who knows what'll happen. Maybe, I mean, I tried to sell it to the developer and I didn't get any results. And, you know, by that time it gets sold, it gets torn down and it just all goes away like a bad dream.
Well, another way to look at this is, you know, dimensionally, you have so much space on the right side. Now, you only have so much equipment, but had you not come forward when we had this conversation, you, you could have brought more equipment into that area. I'm guessing it could have accommodated more. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
No, yes, yes.
So now it's just another way to look at it. So by us putting some type of maximum in terms of, you know, the number of pieces of equipment, I think there is some protection. And perhaps the trade-off is that there's no specificity in terms of it having to be all in this location. But I think there should be some specificity. It should be perhaps between here and some other area that we should perhaps see, you know, a site visit, what have you. So perhaps we can make the situation, if we can't make it less nonconforming, we may be able to protect the town from a more nonconforming situation with more vehicles, et cetera, if you were agreeable to some type of cap. And that's what we need to, we need to get an understanding of what equipment is there and how many pieces and, and perhaps something like that could be structured. At least that's, that's my thinking. I think that's-
I think if you quantify it for us and your, your net result is I need ten, fifteen percent more storage or something because it needs to be laid out this way for access, maybe we'll have a different conversation.
Okay. And the other thing is I, I like the idea of cleaning it up and having a driveway right around it. I mean, it just makes things a lot more work-wise for us and a lot neater. And I, and I certainly don't see, as it's going to offend anyone's view with the way I'm going to do it, I just hadn't thought of all these other issues that you guys have raised.
Well, there's a Bible that we have to live with, so.
You want to call it off in some way or?
Oh, no, you can come back if you want. If you, if you, if you want to go through and take, take what was mentioned to you to heart and, and come back with something saying, okay, I have this and this and this, we'll be willing to see you again. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I guess I'll think about it. And I'm going to, I don't want to have a problem with Bob Bullock if I'm cleaning it up and I stopped everything and I didn't, I didn't chip the wood. So there's a big wood pile and there's stumps out in the back. I want to be able to clean it up. That much I want to be able to do.
Right. I mean, I mean, we can't do anything on his existing order if you, you know, you can continue the land clearing until we come to a resolution. If he says, yeah, you can get rid of the stumps, but you got to work that out with him.
Well, as in front of the place, there's a big pile of-
Well, all your stockpile, you know, take that up with him.
Okay.
But don't take it away and all of a sudden park something there.
Yeah.
Until we're resolved.
No, I'm, I'm not going to do anything radical.
So our last goal is to find a way that you can work it here, and I think that's pretty consistent. We're not trying to find ways to shoot you down. We're trying to find ways to work around you.
We don't want to put you out of business.
Right. And we want to find a way to work around the existing rigs.
Whatever you do, it's not going to put me out of business.
And that's not what we're about.
But, uh, but it might be. I'll buy the thing up at the Shire, but then I'm going to run into the same, same thing. Going to do this, 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 this.
It'd be worse up there.
Worse.
Oh, believe me. Then you get into the structures and the-
Clean sheet of paper across there.
Yes, I know.
I'm going to shut this off. I'm going to shut this off.
Comment from the, from the public here?
Al Blaherty, I was just curious.
You want to give them the microphone here?
Thank you. Sorry to stop the show. I was curious, how did that area on Pond Street where the ball fields are, that has a gravel parking lot?
That's recreational.
And it's built into our regs that we can waive it.
On recreation.
I mean, if we're concerned about the engines on gravel parking lots, I mean, that's much denser use than what he's actually using for the last 50 years.
I mean, it is, Al, but it's also short-term parking, it's not, a vehicle could sit there for perhaps a week or a month or something could be leaking, that's not going to happen on Pond Street.
I'm not saying it's exactly the same, I'm just.
If you read our zoning, there's a lot of, there's a lot of allowances for municipal uses within our zone.
I'm just looking at it in common sense from a.
Sorry, I don't agree with him.
A spectator here, sometimes you see 50 cars sitting on the lot for a few hours at a time, that's a lot of oil.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll go chew on it, I guess, and see what I can come up.
All right, just get in touch with Betsy and put you back on the agenda again.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, we have 7:45, we have Pondville Plaza.
My name is Evan Wilmarth, I'm with the Dover Land Surveying Company on behalf of Mr. Quay Yetti. We are proposing on constructing approximately an 18,000 square foot two-story building at the corner of Pine Street and Valley Street. Each floor is going to house approximately four units and there will be no access from the top floor to the bottom floor, so it's actually going to be like two separate buildings. There's parking down in the, in the bottom, double, you know, two sets of parking.
Um, oh, sorry, that's right.
We have to call the hearing open, is that right?
Good thing you brought, you cut that.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing for Pondville Plaza located at the corner of Pine and Valley Streets, and do you want to read the notice?
Notice is hereby given then in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw Section F11. Public hearing will be held on Thursday, June 20th, 2013 at 7:45 PM in room 124 of the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to a site plan application for property located at the southeasterly corner of the intersection of Valley and Pine Street in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, Alan Quagliari of Walpole, Massachusetts, is proposing construction of a new two-story, 22,000 square foot retail slash food service and medical slash office building with parking and appropriate utilities. The applicant is also requesting special permits for signage and to not require linked parking, see Sections F9, B1, C4, and F9, A11, and J6C of the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws, and a stormwater management permit. The property is located in the C1 zoning district, reference Assessor's Map 25, Block 84, Lots 2. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours. Walter Byron, Secretary of the Planning Board.
Clerk.
Go right ahead.
I can start again. As I said, we're proposing a two-story building, each floor is going to be only accessed from one side, so the downstairs will be accessed off the Pine Street side, and then there's going to be a roadway going up the hill with parking up top and a single access door in the front, which will access the four units up on the top floor. Basically, this is the layout of the parking. It's based on the size of the building and the office use and everything. We determined there was a requirement of 66 parking spots and we've included seven, I believe it's 73 parking spots provided, so we do have some extra, mainly because we're asking for two special permits for fast food establishments, and we believe we need the extra parking for those businesses. If you want, I can switch the plan.
Betsy, do we have a copy here? If you can look up.
As I said, the breakdown of the parking for the building use for the two restaurants requires 28.
Why don't you hold on to that one, Betsy's got.
It requires 28 spots for the two food services, 12 for retail, which we're not sure whether they're going on the top floor or the ground floor, but we're presuming that the takeout would probably be on the lower level. Already accessed the Pines. On the second floor, we assume that that is going to be strictly offices, either general office or medical office, and combined parking spaces is 28. And then in the back of the property, we're going to put in a site office, which is going to be the general management of the property. It'll just be one office with some room for storage of files and a bathroom. That requires two parking spots, so.
I can see, I can see, but I.
As I say, we, we are providing 73 parking spots plus the three required handicapped spots, which are all very inaccessible. But basically, it's a 24-foot wide roadway going all the way up and through with parking on both sides, and again, it's 24 feet wide with parking on both sides. We have split up the parking into sections of either anywhere from five to seven spaces with landscaping islands in between, so as to break up the parking and provide more landscaping. There will be a patio off the side of the building, which we presume that is going to be one of the restaurants, so there could be some outside seating. And otherwise, that takes care of the parking and the building layout. As I said, the entire property is in the C1 district, however, there is two C1 districts, one's on highway, one's off highway, but the line that designates that is so far back on the property. It's in an area where we're barely even going to touch as far as disturbance. There was an issue brought up in one of the comments concerning the aquifer protection district. Let me just get that planned.
Evan, what's the scale on this?
30. Currently, the property with the Pine Street reconstruction is fairly level out in the front back to the highway line, no, property line. It's fairly open, lawn area, these trees down in the front were trees planted by the state. They're also dispersed with some shrubbery that did not show on this plan. And there's a heavy wood line that goes across the front and up the side with an existing house next door, and otherwise it's a heavily wooded lot all the way in, except for this one little swell that runs up the middle that's actually appears to be an old cart road, which is free and clear of any trees. There is a lot that's part of the property at number two Hill Street. That lot, again, is heavily wooded and the back portion of number two Hill Street is also heavily wooded.
I thought it was.
As far as the aquifer protection line, based on the Mass DEP maps, the line runs basically right through the front of the property on a diagonal, so there's approximately about 70 feet on this end down to nothing on the other end. Now, there was a question on one of the comments from PSC concerning lot coverage because we're in the two, you know, we are, we are in the aquifer Zone 2 district in the front, however, in investigating with Mr. Bullock this morning, that, the regulation applies, I believe, to any groundwater aquifer that is for the Norfolk water supply. This entire aquifer protection area is for the well that is on the state property down off of 1A. So therefore, he made a decision that the medical center right next door is not liable for the property, the lot coverage, no requirement.
Not only for that, but I think there was a previous ruling also for the car wash.
Yep.
For that reason.
Now, we are, we are proposing as far as the utilities. Right now, currently, there's a 12-inch water main running down on the opposite side of Pine Street, and when they did that reconstruction of the road, they fed off a 6-inch water stub basically back to about this point in the negotiations, I believe, with the medical office building. They're proposing to extend that 6-inch main down. What we're proposing on doing is tapping in with a 6-inch line for fire protection to come up and feed in to the hydrant gate on the side of the building for the sprinkler system. The other utilities are, currently there's a gas line that runs right in the berm, right along the edge of the road, we're going to tap into that and bring it up and have the gas meters underneath the walkway in the back of the building, so it's basically hidden from public view. As far as water and electrical to the structures, there's an existing, I believe, a 2-inch line that currently crosses Pine Street with, and there's an existing water gate on our property that was left when they did the reconstruction. We're just going to extend it up into the building. There'll be a meter room on the inside of the building on the lower level, and I don't have it on this plan, but that water line is also supposed to extend up into the site office building in the back because there will be a bathroom in that. All the electrical will come off the existing pole underground to a transformer pad and then cut across and tie into the building, where all the meters will be in underneath this, this walkway, which is the emergency exit for the second floor. There's, the air conditioning units for the entire building will be placed right in that same area, which is actually set lower than the grade around it, there's a retaining wall anywhere from, you know, two feet up to six feet high, so the air conditioning units will be down in that hollow, plus the wall that's going to be there protecting it is also going to be shielded by arborvitae screening. As far as the septic system, there's going to be two septic systems, one for the lower floor, one for the upper floor and the site office, both septic systems are capable of handling just under 2,000 gallons a day. And any of the parts of the septic system that lie with, underneath any of the pavement will be rated for H20 loading. As far as the drainage, the parking lot in the back, as far as the grading splits, the majority of the lot slopes down and feeds into one basin here, the rest of it slopes out into this roadway and runs down, being split by the road into two basins down here. The rest of the property feeds down into this lot and it all feeds over to another catch basin here, which is actually a storm septic unit to handle the water quality standards of the town. All these, these three basins feed into a larger storm septic, which then goes into a galley system, which is underneath the pavement, which is capable of holding the 100-year storm. You know, the rest of the prop, the, the other two plans on the sheets are basically the landscape plan and the lighting plan.
May as well show us. Has the Design Review Board seen these plans yet?
Basically, out in the front, there's some trees and shrubbery that are lay out this Pine Street layout, those we're not allowed to remove without town permission, we're not asking for it. However, basically, the majority of all the trees on the entire site are going to end up being removed, either through, because of grading issues, utility issues, or parking, or the building. We'll try and maintain as much as we can down in the front. We have dispersed trees and shrubbery, you know, within the 20-foot landscape setback area on both sides. We've got rows of arborvitae as a screening for the house next door, and we also have them on the low side over in this area of the retaining walls. There's a retaining wall in here, which holds back the property next door. The reason we have these in place is we are proposing modular block concrete walls and we're just going to, you know, they're going to be those stone-cut face walls and we're, but we're going to put a row of arborvitae up to block the face of it, to hide them. On the wall that's going to go off the back of the building around and retain the area for the parking, the upper-level parking and the septic system, again, that's going to be stone, the stone-cut face, you know, modular block, we'll have that faced off with some arborvitae on this side because this is residential land. In the back, there's two industrial buildings out in the back, that's all part of four lots that is owned by. That's all part of four lots that is owned by a person, but there is no residential houses in back, so we're leaving that, just the plain stone face. This section of the retaining wall, which is approximately about 5 and 1/2 to 6 feet high, is all going to be stone veneered face because that's going to be able to be seen by everybody on the patio, people parking, and it might even, parts of it, you know, during the winter months would be seen through the trees. As far as the lighting.
Well, how high are these walls? You know, because it looks to me as though you're going to have to lower quite a bit, don't you? You're going to have to take a lot of fill out of there, aren't you?
Well, in the, in the back area, there's going to be quite a bit of fill coming out of here, but on this side, this area, the grade in this area is going to be going up 5 to 6 feet.
Oh.
And the same thing with the building. The building, basically, it's split right down the middle. The back half is going to be some fill and the front half is going to be a cut situation. And this entire parking lot, this entire parking lot is basically going to be filled up where a lot of this parking lot in here is going to be cut into the hill. So it's basically a 50-50 split on the amount of cut and fill on the entire site.
I'd have to take a look at this because I'm just imagining a slope like this when I drive by it.
Yeah, that's all I know.
Well, right now, from the, from the street up to this back corner, there's almost 30 feet in difference in elevation. But this, this entire back corner, we're not changing any of the grading. We're going to leave all the trees and everything as natural as we can.
So these stones, these stone walls aren't going to be higher than 4 feet, right?
Actually, they're going to, they're going to be upwards. The majority of them are going to be anywhere from 3 to 6 feet. You know, the worst-case scenario is this wall in here by the loading zone hits a maximum, I think, of 7 and 1/2.
And do you have a fence that's designed for?
Yeah, there's going to be a fence, there's going to be a fence along the wall, anywhere where the wall's over 4 feet. The building code requires there'd be a fence.
Non-climbable, supposedly. That's.
And for the lighting. It's going to consist of about 11, I believe, 11 or 12 overhead lights, lighting up the parking areas around the perimeter. The building itself, there's a 6-foot overhead canopy, just like at Rocco Plaza, one down below, one up above. That whole area is going to be all underlit, so there will be some spillage from the building out into the parking areas up along the building. But basically, all the lighting is designed so there's no more than a quarter candlefoot crossing the line. Actually, it's down, down to about a tenth of a candlefoot. One area where there is some, what appears to be some spillage, there actually isn't because of the landscaping with the arborvitae hedge. But, you know, then there'll be the access lights over the doorways on the, on the side. Two doors up above, and there's also a door down below on each side. You know, those will have the standard, just, you know, direct light.
So the main entrances are for the first floor over on the right, or?
It's right here.
Oh, okay. So, oh, so you were saying the doors on the, on the right and left there, those are, those are the emergency ones?
Those are the emergency doors. I'll show you the building plan in just a minute. And the main entrance in the top is, again, right in the middle. So let me go to the building plan.
Before you do, the one light, the, the first one up on the right there, after you go, yeah, that fella, that fella.
Yep.
That's the one that's closest to the house next door, right?
Yep. But there's, there's going to be a row of arborvitae, basically from here all the way back up through the wall.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Have to push you.
Plus, plus the lights are specified that they, you know, a sharp cutoff, you know, so there's no spillage back of the light.
Evan, going east, I guess, Marygold 468 to 10 Hill Street.
Yep.
Is that that yellow building in back there, is that what abuts this property?
Yeah.
It's like a commercial building.
There's actually two commercial buildings back there.
Right, there's one lower and there's one two level.
Yep.
And that's what abuts the area of that?
Yeah.
Okay. I could have asked the mayor of Pondville, she's here.
Get, as I say, this is somewhat, very similar to Rocco Plaza, except it's a reverse situation. Rocco Plaza, there's a single entrance on the front, and on the back side, it's two stories. In this case, it's going to be, you know, the lower level with only the primary accesses off the front of the building. And then when you drive up and around, there'll be a main entrance, and then there'll be four offices set off a common hallway, running the entire, you know, width of the building. And as I said, this, this is the view from the side where the roadway's going up. So there'll be the canopy over the walk that runs across the entire front of the building. Then it'll come back, this'll be an emergency exit. All the electrical meters and everything will be in here with the air conditioning units. And then there'll be the retaining wall. This wall comes out and goes this way, back down towards the street. So as far as.
That's that 7-foot wall? That's that one that's on the 7 feet?
Actually, this wall's approximately about 6 feet high.
Just further up to the right from there, it's, it reaches 7.
Yeah, on the other side of the roadway where the loading areas, that's where it goes up to the 7 and 1/2 foot wall.
Okay.
And as I said, these two doors are strictly for emergency access because you have to have two, two doorways in every unit. So we've got, got them coming in off of the common, up above, off the common hallway down the middle, and then there's emergency access through, which goes through a walkway which feeds down to the retaining wall on both sides of the building.
With a double-loaded corridor upstairs?
It's going to be a 20, I believe it's 20-foot wide corridor that goes with two offices on one side, two offices on the other. And at the end of the corridor, there's going to be common bathrooms for all four offices.
But your two, your two emergency egress at the ends, are those within the units themselves?
Yes.
Okay. So the corridor doesn't reach all the way to the end of the building?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
And as I said, on the office building, it's, it's a small 20 by 40-foot building. There'll be a file room, a bathroom, and then the general office area. And that's for the, you know, the site manager.
All right. So we're going to hear from our consultants, and we'll start with Gino because he'll go a little quicker.
Comment number two regarding the parking, I just noted that the, their calculation is based on 80% of the gross square footage being possible, and just noting that that would need to be confirmed by building commissioner and based on the, the actual build-out plans. The, the row of evergreens on the, the side that faces the existing house does not go all the way down to the street. It does go as far as the location of the house. So there's existing woods that would be remaining, perhaps, though I noticed that Tom noted that the electrical line is shown going through, through those existing woods. So maybe that, that might need to be moved a little bit to preserve the wooded area. There is a request to waive the linked parking requirement. And I just note that the, there's a good opportunity to connect to the adjacent undeveloped property right now, either with, as a vehicular connection, considering there's only one entrance in and out, or at a minimum, a pedestrian connection, like has been done in the other, couple of other projects.
Gino, can you stop right there?
Yeah.
This land court lot here.
Yep.
What's there?
Basically, just woods.
Nothing.
And that's what you're referring to linking to?
Well, make provisions for future link is what I, what I had in mind.
I mean, that lot is actually combined indeed with the house at number two Hill Street. It's all.
Does that be older boarded up homes?
No.
No, it'd be.
It's on the corner.
This one, definitely.
Oh, okay. Oh, because the older one is on the other side of Hill Street. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so technically, that, that is a residential lot next door, even though it's in the commercial district. You know, there is a residential house on it. It's just at the land court lot. The land court lot is vacant, but it's part of the parcel owned by number two Hill Street.
A sign permit has also been applied for, and the sign being proposed is very similar to other signs that, multi-tenant signs that have been proposed. It's less than 100 square feet. One, one is designed to be not quite 24 square feet, which is allowed by special permit. So that, it pretty much complies with the requirements.
Was there sign details in here?
Yes. There's a waiver request for the sidewalk in, in front of the property. Most of the property has a sidewalk along Pine Street. On Valley Street, there's a short stretch that does not have a, a short, short stretch of the front of the lot that is not proposed to have a sidewalk. It's not very long, and given the discussion on the Pine Street Medical Center, that there should be a sidewalk on that side of the street, I just suggest that that little link should be in place so that it would be a continuous sidewalk in the future.
Yeah, you should have expected that to come up.
Can I address that for one minute? The reason it's not there is, let me just show you. As I, as I was talking about the land court lot, the actual sideline for Pine Street, when a part of Valley Street was abandoned and combined with Pine Street, is set back in here, and then there's a tie. And then from here over is Valley Street. Valley Street, according to all the ancient plans, is considered what they call a two-rod road. It's 33 feet wide. It's a, some plans call it a variable width, but the land court recognizes it as a 33-foot wide road. However, this piece of land court property extends out beyond this line here, to the point that it's actually out into the pavement that they just re-did in the rebuilding. In fact, the curbing that comes around this corner and out goes into the land court, and the utility pole is in the land court. So even if we were to extend the sidewalk around here, unless this gentleman decides to give the town some land, this sidewalk cannot be extended through his property without a taking by the town.
We'll worry about that when the time comes. We'll, we'll deal with it piecemeal. That's, that's how we're going to get it done.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's pretty much it. The last, last comment I had concerned the, the trees out front, and I did not realize that those trees out front were a part of the, already planted as part of the road project.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was part of the reconstruction project, Pine Street. And I believe with the proposed walk I've got coming down to tie into this handicap ramp, I think one tree has to be relocated. Otherwise, all those trees will remain.
Okay.
Can we, before we close with Gino's comments, I'd like to talk about the sidewalk here for a minute. In the event, because we, you know, specifically pushed the sidewalk over, we walked through the medical office building parking lot, this is clearly was designed, you know, to connect with the existing parking lot at the medical office building along 115 that's in place. Rather than requiring this sidewalk to nowhere, the 80 or whatever-so-feet that are there, is there any way that we could condition it when they do have the connection, rather than putting it in now?
I mean, it's something. Once it's built and everything's done, it's really hard to go back unless they bond it and we just hold on to the money. But, you know, better off just having it done because, you know, as this road gets developed, we can't go without any sidewalk on that roadway. Got to get it on, have to have it on one side or the other.
I mean, I understand that, but, you know, this, this piece here, trying to take a piece, especially land court piece, if they dig in their hills, good luck. I've been tied up in a court case for two years now.
So Peter, what are you saying? You'd go as far as where the?
Well, where?
The walkway?
Right. I mean, I think that they took care to, like, make the connection so there's a consistent walkway across. But, you know, are we going to build this for no reason right now? Maybe we can condition it, maybe we can bond it, but why require it if this could be never there?
If, they may want to develop it for commercial property. If this is successful, they may decide to do it.
You never know.
I like the idea of somehow trying to condition it because the sidewalk to nowhere just seems like another silly thing. I don't think we should do a sidewalk to nowhere.
Well, how do you condition them to do it after they're gone? I mean, how much, what, what's a sidewalk per foot?
And that's the other thing, it's such a small amount. I mean, sort of mixed feelings about it. Such a small amount of sidewalk. Do you just do it now since you have everything out there? You're mobilized, you're building a sidewalk anyway.
We're not making a decision on it tonight.
No.
I want to throw that out there.
It's just food for thought. Food for thought, yeah.
It's just that there was a long conversation about sidewalks, and it was decided, and there's several people in this room who were part of the whole issue of pushing the sidewalk onto the other side of the street.
It seems like you're holding it against me at this point.
Trying to hold you to it, not against you.
Hold you to it, yeah.
To it, not against you.
Well, I just really think there should be a master plan.
Well, there was a sidewalk plan. I'm just not sure exactly which side this, it probably had sidewalks on both sides of the street on the sidewalk plan.
But that's exactly what we're trying to encourage is a master plan and trying to push it in that direction as much as we can.
And in the past, we haven't, you know, forced sidewalks recently down people's throats trying to put projects up.
Not trying to force anything down anyone's throat, just some food for thought, okay? That's fair.
Let's see it open as a discussion item going forward.
Yeah, that's fair.
Tom, do you have some comments also?
I do, and I'm going to try to redeem myself by going through the quickening top. Honestly, I think, the plan, I think, is in good shape. The comments, although there are several, they're pretty utilitarian in nature. I don't see any site stop, any showstoppers here. Comment number one, we're looking for the plan that locates the. Comment number one, we're looking for the plan that locates the prior soil borings that were taken on the property. Comment number two, we don't think the dumpster is located such that pickup is convenient. Truck has to do quite a bit of backing up. Comment number three, the top of the infiltration system, the elevation is 198. That should be lowered, if possible, about a foot so that it gets it down out of the pavement section, and you don't see cracks and things reflecting up through the pavement. Comment number eight is looking for some additional detail on the fire protection system. Comment ten, we're looking for pressure and flow information on the water distribution system.
May I ask something? That's for the existing twelve-inch main in Pine Street?
Yeah.
You're requiring, has to do a lot of study of it?
We're requiring you to tell us the pressure and flow in that.
Didn't we see a separate comment coming out of DPW earlier today? Did we get copied on some emails on that?
Yeah, it's included in your package.
Yeah, there wasn't anything about a study on it, except for the size of the bell.
Just a measurement.
Yeah, if you contact the DPW, they probably have the information. If not, you can have it done for $200 or $300. You'll need it anyway for your fire protection system in the building, so it's just when you do it.
Do we have current pressure that might have been very timely for the medical office building recently?
Maybe. I didn't cross-check that.
It might be something that's readily available.
Comment thirteen, the architectural plan indicates the building, the door on the side of the building, you discussed that, Evan, so I think that door needs either a landing or a sidewalk. Comment fifteen, we discussed the sidewalk. Comment sixteen, pipe materials aren't shown on the drawings. Comment eighteen, the driveway is relatively steep, around six and a half percent, so we're looking for a leveling area at the street. Comment nineteen is looking for some additional detail on the curbing installation. Comment twenty, Mass DOT's requirements for curb radii are a little bit smaller than the thirty-foot you've got there. I don't know if you're--
It's thirty feet. It's thirty feet for commercial.
Is it real?
Yeah, because we applied for the state curb cut for Leo's Landing, and I had twenty, I believe twenty-six.
They wanted thirty.
Curb radius, and they want us to change it to thirty.
I'm not sure whether Mass DOT has jurisdiction over that roadway. They might through a traffic control agreement.
115's a county layout, so they--
They might through a traffic control agreement because they paid for the work there, so I don't know. But if it's thirty feet, it's thirty feet. That's fine. Twenty-one, a portion of the driveway sheds stormwater into Pine Street, so it's something the board would have to allow, which I think it's a reasonable amount of flow. You have to ask to do that, and I would suggest that you discuss that with the DPW to see if they have any concerns about that. Comment twenty-two and twenty-three, we're looking for seasonal high groundwater elevations in the footprint of the stormwater basin, and just to note that it's closer than a hundred feet to Pine Street, so there'd be a waiver required for that setback. Comment number twenty-four, this is just a bit of a concern about the noise from the mechanical equipment due to the proximity of the residence. I think the simple solution, maybe we could condition it. Most of the mechanical equipment you buy, they can tell you what the decibel coming out of it is, so it may be below required standards, or you may have to put some additional opaque fencing there or whatever. You described it down in a hole, but we need a little more information to put that issue aside. Twenty-five, this is a requested waiver of the traffic study. Comment twenty-nine is requesting some detail on curbing installation. Comment thirty, snow storage areas should be indicated. Comment thirty-two, we thought, and maybe we have the same impression everybody does, that there'd be a lot more earthworks. We asked you to check that. Maybe it's because, as you explained tonight, it's more balanced than you think, but we did ask you to verify those earthwork quantities. Thirty-three, the retaining walls aren't hugely high, but they are over four feet, so there is a waiver required of Section 855. Comment thirty-five, again, this is noise-related concerns for the mechanical equipment. Comment thirty-seven, we incorrectly assumed this fifteen percent impervious issue. You indicated that Mr. Bullock had clarified that issue. Thirty-eight, just a special permit for parking in the front yard. Comment thirty-nine, technically, there are two loading spaces required for the building, and one is shown. Comment forty, there are special permits required for oversized signs, and we suggested a detail of that to be added. Comment forty-two, the driveway doesn't technically meet a hundred-foot setback from the driveways across the street, but our opinion would be that the driveway is in an appropriate location, so although it is formed with a hundred feet, I would not recommend changing the site plan. And I think Gino mentioned these two things, forty-three and forty-four.
Say that again, Tom? I'm sorry. What number?
Comment forty-two, Peter, the setback, the offset to the driveway across the street is eighty-four feet instead of a hundred feet.
It looks, on this plan, as if it's directly across.
He's talking about the car wash, which you guys approved by--
Right. That's across from the car wash.
Right, and I think a lot of that got thrown into disarray because of what happened.
Exactly, yeah.
Due north.
But, long and short of it is, we believe the driveway is in the correct location. Comment forty-three and forty-four, I think Gino mentioned these, the required special permits with respect, excuse me, the special permit for the takeout restaurants and relief from the linked parking. So, again, several comments, but I think they're sort of utilitarian in nature. I think the plan's in good shape.
Tom, Bob McGee had just presented a memo today. It's in the packet where he's bringing up the catch basins.
Did you guys get those?
I just got them this afternoon.
Okay.
Somebody's noting that the parking area is designed just for single grate catch basins, and he has concern that runoff will travel a great distance and collect a larger amount of water, especially at the driveway entrance, than single catch basins can handle. So can you look into that in your next round?
Sure.
What's that?
Before I came over tonight, I did a quick check, and the catch basin grates that are specified are designed to handle two and a half cubic feet per second of inflow, and if you go through my drainage report, the three major catch basins actually only, on a hundred-year storm, have a maximum inflow of 1.3 cubic feet per second. The only one that is higher than that is the catch basin that is down in the bottom, which is a storm septic unit. And on the hundred-year storm, that hits an inflow of 2.2 cubic feet per second, so the inflow is rated below what the catch basin grate is designed for.
So I read part of his comment being that the capacity, but also being the distances and few number of them to how much it has to travel across the site.
Well, on a typical street, it's, the pavement's twenty-four feet wide, and catch basins are three hundred feet apart. In this situation, the roadway's twenty-four feet wide, and the catch basins are a hundred and fifty feet apart, so it's catching less than what a regular street would carry. So if the streets in Norfolk can handle them, then this parking lot should--
You know what? Can you at least quantify that and make a memo back to Bob on it?
Yep.
Because he probably just wants to be careful.
Do you have a response to that also? The comment, the discrepancy between the two calculations on the distance between the catch basins?
Is there a discrepancy in calculations, or I didn't see--
I think Bob just raised a sort of a qualitative type of concern, that the catch basins might be too far apart. You might be getting too much, it's not really gutter flow, but flow along the low point in the parking lot. So, we can take a look at that. I mean, it sounds like Evan has already evaluated it, but we'll, I can call Bob, make sure he's comfortable with the design, or maybe we can modify it in some way, but--
And I think if you quantify it for him.
I mean, the numbers that Evan quoted are realistic. I mean, you can probably get about two CFS through a catch basin, depending on how open it is. And if he's well below that, under the hundred-year storm, doesn't sound like it's a problem, but sometimes there are concerns that aren't reflected in the words of the comments. We'll check with Bob.
Keep them clean.
Well, we're going to have questions from the board now. Would you like to start, Michelle?
I was actually interested to see if anyone had any comments.
Well, let's get them from the board before we open it up to the general public.
No, I'm okay right now.
You're all set?
Mm-hmm.
Peter, do you have any questions?
Yes, I, so far, it looks fine, other than the one that we brought up about the sidewalk could be discussed, so.
All right. Greg, did you have any?
Not this time.
Moving right along. When you first talked about the existing, is it an existing water line, two-inch water line, did you say?
On the right-hand side.
Yeah, right now, in Pine Street, there's an existing twelve-inch main. When they did the reconstruction, they left two-inch, I believe, two-inch lines feeding into every lot, vacant lot down Pine Street. So we already have a water service, the potable water in the building, with a water gate on our property, which we're just going to tap into and feed up into the building. That's to the right of the driveway.
When you mentioned two-inch, I was just wondering whether that was sufficient, and in fact, you know, after reading Bob McGee's memorandum, he's asked the same question.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it's a fairly substantial project, so.
He's got six-inch coming in on the other side, right?
Yeah, we're going to be tying into that, but that's for the fire suppression system.
Is that a check on?
Yeah.
I mean, two-inch is pretty big for--
For just potable water.
Right.
I mean, that's what we have at Rocco Plaza, that's what we've had at Leo's Landing, Lucca Plaza.
Walter, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. My concern has to do with traffic. You've asked for a waiver on a traffic study.
Yes.
The area down there is fortunately being developed, and we have Rocco Plaza in place, we have Four Kicks, the fence company, Joffren, and now the car wash and the medical office building, and then this office building. So there's a lot of traffic in the area, and I think this is just going to add to it, so be it, but nevertheless, there is a significant traffic load in that area. Right at the intersection there, there's a lot of businesses. So I'm not sure that we should waive the traffic study. We really ought to understand how much flow is going to go in and out of these businesses. That's a concern I have. Secondly, I may be the only one, including the fire chief, who's concerned about this, but there's only one access to this piece of property, and although it would create a significant design change to do so, one could consider putting a road down from the end of that upper level down the side of the property out to Valley Street as a possible second access to the building. It's not an overriding concern, and certainly didn't appear to be a concern of the fire chief. Nevertheless, it's an issue I'd like to at least put on the table.
Well, the fire chief generally likes to have access to the entire building, and there is access on three sides. So there's only one short side that doesn't have direct access from the pavement. But Bob McGee had the same concern with traffic.
If you say, a width of the building and bring a roadway right in here.
No, no, I think the building, if you look at the layout, you could probably squeeze a road down that, down the other side of the building.
That would, then we'd have no place for any of the utilities on that side of the building. We'd have, be eliminating the patio area for the potential restaurant. We've got grading issues with the property next door, and we'd be dumping out a roadway within thirty feet of the major intersection.
Yes.
That would be more of a traffic hazard than anything else. And as far as the layout of this building, it's very similar to Rocco Plaza, one entrance in, one entrance out, and with parking wrapping both the front and the back of the building, and the fire chief had no issues with that.
True, true, but that isn't at the intersection of Valley Street and Pine Street, you know.
Yeah. To try and direct traffic directly into that intersection would be extremely dangerous, and I believe Tom would agree with that.
Well, it wouldn't be a permanent road. I mean, I don't know if you realize it, but this building has a road on the side, another driveway on the other side also, that has access from the parking lot for fire. But it's got grass growing on it now. It was planned that way, but I mean, it can be done. I'm not recommending it because I think that fire can reach all the way around this building. I mean, Four Kicks, I think, has only access from two sides.
Yes.
But the, what was I going to ask? Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. The two percent grade that you're talking about at the bottom of the driveway, how long does that have to be? Two-car lengths, or generally? Well, you know, to the extent that it incorporates the subdivision regs, I think it's fifty feet, but, you know, you could prob, I mean, the most critical thing is the first car, so I guess you could probably shorten it to thirty feet, but thirty or fifty, somewhere in that range. Yeah. Are you going to be able to do that, to get a two percent slope at the base? I mean, it happens all over the place, will we mandate a two percent grade at the bottom?
I may have to, in doing that, I mean, if I could drop the drainage system a foot to accommodate the pavement he's talking about, his recommendation, I can probably pitch it in at two percent and then go up at ten, you know, to try and match the grading going up, because it's basically a six, six and a half percent slope all the way up to the back parking lot.
It's a really high side.
But that's a tough place to be coming down, a six percent slope straight onto a highway with no two percent at the bottom.
That's a good point. I mean, in the wintertime, somebody slides down.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
We have to slide more.
The medical office building right now. Yeah.
Next door.
Now, the thirty-foot radius that you have on the driveway--
We need to pursue injury attorney in the building here.
That's a larger radius than what is generally requested for these buildings. Is that right? We usually request a twenty-four, is that right?
Well, that's normally what--
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
The Mass DOT spec for commercial buildings is twenty, is thirty. Because we just, we applied for this Mass Highway permit for Leo's Landing, and we had twenty-six, and they're making us change it to thirty.
Oh.
No.
I'd like to hear from Bob on that also.
For residential driveway, it's as low as twenty-two foot in some cases.
Because I know that there's some discrepancy, like, I know that at the fence company, it's probably-- it's probably not 30 at the fence company.
Well, the thing is, this is not a state, it's a numbered state highway, but it's a county layout. The county has control of it. If you want a reduction in the radius to say 24, that can be done. It's your discretion what you want. I tried to comply with the state highway requirement for commercial business.
The range of things is probably 20, 25, and 30. And there's like countervailing design principles. As the radii get smaller, what you're doing is you're minimizing the exposure for pedestrians walking along the sidewalk, because it's not quite so big an open area. If you went below 20, then you start to get into problems impeding truck turns. So I don't think this building is going to have a whole bunch of trucks. So I might err on the side of having a smaller radii, but I think you need to check with Bob McGee and find out what restrictions, if any, are imposed by a traffic control agreement over this section of the roadway. I mean, that's, Mass Highway does them typically when they participate in funding, and I don't know what the requirements are.
Well, you said that you were going to talk to Bob about the storm drains anyway.
Yeah, I'll talk to him about that.
Could you talk to him about that, and also the leveling at the 2% grade?
I think you somehow have to be leveled. I mean, that's.
Yeah. One other thing, Walter and Tom, I'd like you to chime in on this. You know, we've traditionally waived in most cases the traffic study, because to use your own words, from a pass site plan review, you know, the value is suspect, because it's a snapshot, okay? And a lot of the concerns, although well-founded by Walter right now, these places aren't built yet. So they wouldn't give us an accurate portrayal of what's going on. It'd be all suspect.
Well, you can quantify it. The common thing to do in terms of no build conditions is have just a percent for background traffic, but then you add in what are called specific generator projects, which are approved projects near the site. And what you'll frequently see is that the traffic engineer will take the trip generation from each of those projects and simply overlay it on what's there. So you can quantify it. The only issue is, in this type of situation, is how beneficial is the information? In other words, none of the driveways, and I'm sure Valley Street, is not going to meet the warrants for signalization. So you can't put a traffic signal in. You're probably going to have stop control on all the driveways and stop control on Valley Street anyway. So if you do a traffic study, you can find out what kind of a problem you have in terms of delay to project users getting out, which is really what it is. The theory of stop sign controlled intersections is that the main street traffic is not impeded at all. It's a delay by the side street or the driveway, the case, waiting for a gap of sufficient dimensions in the traffic stream to pull out safely. It's called gap acceptance. So you can calc what the delay is for a driveway off of Valley Street, but having calced it, that's about it. You know, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't lead you to anything productive that you wouldn't otherwise do. You'd put stop signs in, you'd put stop lines. Having the information that the project users are going to be delayed while that is maybe good to know, it doesn't terribly much help you with anything.
But there are a few things to consider that are unique to each entrance onto a roadway such as site distance. All right, so there has to be good site distance here, and also the anticipated speed of, you know, vehicles in this case coming from Route 1, which I'm not saying that any of those rise to the level of concern.
Yeah, I mean, you can scope a traffic study to address anything. And intersection site distance, although my, I didn't go out in field measure, but my perception is it's pretty decent here. What you could do is put down an ATR, an automatic traffic recorder, and they'll do it for about 300 bucks. And that'll give you a speed of the vehicles. Part of the output you get is the 85th percentile speed. And the 85th percentile speed, you should have site distance, stopping site distance and intersection site distance to accommodate the 85th percentile speed. So if you have the speed, you can measure what the site distance should be. And then for intersection site distance, you go out in the field and you measure the height of the car. If it's stopping site distance, you measure a two-foot bumper, and you can calc whether or not you have the site distance. So that might be an aspect of a traffic study which would be helpful in this situation.
I mean, that site is as clear for site distance as you can get.
That's my perception, but.
I mean, I don't think that should even be on the table. That's, you know.
Well, you certainly know that coming down the hill from Route 1, the speed is pretty high.
No doubt.
Pretty high.
Right. But that's not something that, I mean, short of us, you know, putting the stop signs in that we require even on any basic site. If Tom doesn't think it reaches a level of signalization, which I don't think it would.
Has to be 150 cars an hour for eight hours of the day. Not going to happen.
Well, I know that the general speed going down that hill is approximately, now, only because I catch myself all the time.
You're driving all the way.
I'm in, I'm in traffic. That's why I know.
You're on camera.
And generally speaking, the traffic goes between 40 and 45 miles an hour down that hill. And I try to catch myself all the time, because I know that someone's hiding in the Joffran driveway. So I try to make sure I go.
You don't have any site distance.
Right. So I try to catch myself, but I always look down and look at my speed, and it's always somewhere between 40 and 45 miles an hour, just because of the hill.
Right. Once they took out that real room. Things definitely sped up.
All right. Are we done here with the board? With the board, or do, I'm going to open it up to the public? All set?
Do you all have a comment, though? Have you tried to get in there?
Did?
The applicant? No?
Oh. Did, okay, are there any comments from the, or questions from the public? And if so, could you please identify yourself?
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville. Pondville Plaza looks good to me so far. And I think the second driveway, I agree with Evan, that that seems like it would be really problematic. I hope, and this is my opinion, I hope that we don't get hung up on the sidewalk. It's my opinion. I hope that the project can move forward without getting stuck on that. I really do, in any way possible.
There's no getting stuck.
My choice of words.
Either it's in there or it is.
Yeah, but I just hope that we, quite frankly, I just don't see that it's necessary. I know that area well. I pick trash up there all the time. The sidewalk that is existing on the conceptual plan looks sufficient. And I know that we're thinking future, but we're thinking right now. And so I'm just hoping that that sidewalk issue will just be put to rest for a while. I think things look pretty good. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Is there anybody else? Nope, it's not. Do we want to continue? When would you like to continue to?
Can we just summarize that the issues that you guys would like to see addressed?
Oh, that's yours.
The Bob McGee issue with the catch basin covers, or grades, whatever you call. Obviously, the 2% because of the 6% grade onto 115.
The radii on the driveway.
You'd like to see that decreased?
Check with Bob.
Yeah. See what Bob prefers. Because a lot of what is in the designs that are down there now were from Butch. I don't know if Bob is going to be the same with the construction details as Butch was.
Can we think about this logically, though? We're dealing with, say, that 45 downgrade, okay, 45 miles an hour downgrade. I think the lack of pedestrians, therefore the wider mouth that you're worried about, is less of a concern than someone having to pull a lot tighter and stop, because the wider that you can actually pull up 115, all right, is the less time that you could potentially have a down gradient rear end erection.
I'm only concerned that the highway department has input into it, that's all. I don't have an, I don't have any judgment whatsoever on the 24 or 30. The comment is in here, and I just want Bob to be able to be the final person to comment on it, that's all.
I think the quicker and easier you can get off of 115 on that downgrade, it makes sense.
I think, there's a comment about the decibel output on the mechanical equipment. Let me see, did I have anything else?
I'd like to see this go before the DRB.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's a separate.
Before it's come back.
The parking calculations by the building commissioner?
Isn't that going to be more tenant-driven, though, Steve?
It's use-driven. It has to be decided before the building's built.
We use the same calc as the medical office building.
Well, yeah, but it has to be confirmed by him, because he's the one that decides whether or not that's the right calculation. We don't calculate it.
I just don't think he ever decided. He never, he never made a decision on Leo's Landing. I don't think he made a decision on the medical office building. I think we do this.
I think we always get input from the building commissioner, don't we, on the numbers?
On the 80%. I have yet to see a letter, a ruling. It seems like we do this every, every project.
At least put it in if you don't get it responsible, address it accordingly.
Yeah.
You know, send a letter out, Evan.
I'd like you to chew on the thought of the sidewalk a little bit, pros and cons of it.
I'll be gagging on that, not chewing.
It was your idea. Move it across the street.
No, no. If we want to be accurate, I was asked by the chairman at the time to give my opinion at a moment's notice, all right?
You said move it across the street.
I gave an initial opinion that it should go on the other side, and then I thought about it, all right? So if you're asking for my expertise, then.
Go back on the other side.
Yeah, move it back to the medical.
You shouldn't hold that against me, because you asked my opinion.
Well, why has your opinion changed, then?
It hasn't changed. It's just that I see, you know, from project to project, a different long-term plan. You know, don't put it here, we'll let the DPW decide where to put it here. Let's just extend it here, and then we'll deal with all the other parcels. It just, it just seems to be a plan.
Well, that whole area is under development, and you know it's going to happen. So, you know, we may as well start planning on sidewalks.
The problem there was the width of the right away.
There was no sidewalk.
That's the problem.
Option on that side, right.
And I had, and when I, you asked me for that opinion, I didn't have any idea that it was, the parcel there is lancheted.
Yeah.
All right, so you're going to have to do an eminent domain taking to get past that parcel.
Unless they want to give it.
Yeah, we'll worry about that.
So if you were that adamant, you should have had it on the other side with the medical office building. If you had the same feeling you have today, then you should have stuck with the original one and had the medical office building put the sidewalk in. That's just my feeling.
Well, the majority of the people thought that the other side of the street was a better location for the sidewalk. That's the way it came out when we had the hearing for the medical office building.
And we negotiated the water line, that they're installing a water line. There's some other off-site mitigation that they're doing, so.
Exactly. I fully agree with both those points.
Steve, let me make sure I understand. So, you know, we're giving the applicant some things, to-do list, if you will. But there's other things in here, and I don't think they're problematic, but these would also apply.
Also the one, yeah.
There's a number of things in here. Some of them are just the markings on drawings and things like that. So I just want to make sure that we're not.
Yeah, yeah, you should go through the comment letters from both of these consultants.
Well, it's from two consultants. There's one from the chief, there's one from the DPW, and there's one from the DPW's consultant. So there's quite a few comments to sort of digest.
And we should, Chief Stone?
Yes.
And we should get, at least get some of these letters into the, into the record. If you want to reference them just by, by who they're from and the date of them. You don't have to read them, just reference that we received them.
They'll be referenced in the meeting minutes. Was Chief Stone reviewing this, Tuna?
He was giving us the site plans. I haven't heard, I haven't received a comment from him.
All right. So how long do you need to continue this meeting?
We're going to set it based on when you're going to come.
Yeah, you're the first. Oh, you've got two of those.
Yeah, you gave yours.
No, this one's yours. It's got your handwriting.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, no, that's Betsy's handwriting.
Do I put?
We could do the 11th or the 18th.
I'm on vacation the 18th.
I'm on vacation the 11th.
Yeah, I'm not available the 11th.
Do we want to go on a different night, so we're not so spread out?
We could do a different night.
Are you going to come?
Well, that's a Monday. So you're on vacation that week.
No, this is June.
That's June, right.
I'll show you. It would be the 16th.
I have a board and health meeting on the 16th.
What about the 9th?
I'm on vacation that week.
Not good for me.
Okay. The week of the 22nd?
I'm on vacation from the 17th to the 26th.
Oh.
Weekend.
The 16th?
Well, there is a.
I have a board and health meeting.
Oh.
So, just my.
We may have to just push it off.
Or.
I mean, you can always review.
Yeah.
Or you can always review.
That's, that's true.
Yeah. Well, you're with him.
Who, what is, what do most people, what date do most people feel come?
See, if Walter and you are the same days.
We'll follow on that, the week of the 15th, right?
So you're looking at the 18th.
No, the week of the 8th.
Yeah, week of the 8th is not good for me, but the week of the 15th is okay.
I think I'm the only one who couldn't do it on the 18th.
And you can review it?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm available the 11th and the 18th, as far as I know.
The 18th? Does the 18th of July sound good to you?
How about the 15th, Monday?
Or Monday the 15th. Anyone want to do it on a Monday?
I can do it. It's fine.
Betsy, we'll have to remind everyone that it's Monday.
I can do it on a Monday.
Monday the 15th?
Yeah, Monday the 15th sounds good to me. You can make it on the 15th, right? Okay, does somebody want to make that motion?
I move to continue the hearing on Monday, July 15th at, shall we say, 7:45.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Looking good. Exciting.
Let me see now.
Just a comment, prediction, if you will, that I think that we've got such a heavy traffic load coming down in that area, we're going to be, we're going to have problems.
I tend to agree with you that it's going to be more problematic than people realize it's going to be there.
Yes.
But like Tom said, that traffic study's not going to really capture a lot of that.
Well, I understand his point. On the other hand, looking back at the layout of the medical office building, I really regret that there wasn't an exit on Valley Street.
I regret that, too.
Let me ask this question, though. Do we think that the circumstances are that different than 1A on that stretch of roadway in terms, you know, we haven't really had problems that I'm aware of with 1A in terms of the folks pulling, pulling out and pulling in and such.
Well, I think we've got the added, edited issue that we touched on earlier of coming down a hill like 45 miles an hour. I mean, you don't have that on 1A, really.
Well, you don't have a hill. I mean, it's.
You have a faster speed limit on 1A.
Yeah, but folks are going.
I bless you, Betsy.
Otherwise, I might tend to agree, Walter, with you, but I'm just trying to compare 1A with that, so unless I'm missing something, I don't, I'm not aware of problems.
I think there's a higher traffic usage in a concentration area, yeah. All those people parking at Fort Kicks and the medical.
I guess, but, I mean, not even to cast aspersions on your comment, Walter, but. I guess, I mean, not even to cast aspersions on your comment, Walter, but, I mean, to what end, as Tom said? We're never gonna reach the threshold of what the traffic study's gonna say.
Hundred and fifty cars an hour for eight hours, that's only twelve hundred car... There's gotta be more than twelve hundred cars going by that intersection today.
That's on the side-street approach. Five hundred on the main street, a hundred and fifty on the side-street are the thresholds. So it'll never happen in a parking lot. I doubt it happens on Valley Street. But that's a huge traffic line.
Steve, Lou Petrosi asks for a continuance.
I was just gonna ask you if you had heard from Lou.
Okay. I don't wanna drag that out. I just say I think there's gonna be a problem down the road.
It's an excellent point, yeah.
It's a fair comment, Walter.
And Bob McGee wants to have a conversation about it. So when does Lou Petrosi want us to move these out to?
The next meeting, so we'll schedule him for July fifteenth.
All right. Sandinola Estates. Anyone here for Sandinola Estates? Ah, okay. You could identify yourself and give your information.
Take a microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Can we phone this guy up?
Yeah.
I'm Michael Dunapoli, president of Maple Sands Corporation. This is my partner, Bill Rocker.
Hi.
Hey.
We have an extension on our subdivision. And I think that the Commonwealth has already extended most of its permits for this year.
When does that automatic extension continue until?
Well, it depends when it was, when the original expiration date happened. And then it continues it for four years from that.
Four years from the original? What's the original expiration date?
The original expiration date, I think is something...
I'm sorry, not necessarily the original. If it's already been extended, if that...
We had it extended two years ago, so I guess it would be extended for...
Four years from that date?
Four years from that date, so we've got two years already.
So you got two more years, right?
If that's the way I read it...
Why don't we make it concurrent with the state, then?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have no say in it. It is concurrent with the state.
But we need to at least...
Acknowledge that.
Well, at least make the motion as the board, right?
Well, do we have an expiration date that's...
It's four more years. If it's expiring now, it was two years ago, it was extended for two years.
It was extended for two years.
So you got four more years.
Four more years, yeah.
I thought the expiration, I thought the extensions were already passed. I thought that that automatic extension has gone by already.
Extending from the existing timeframe.
If it was in existence from two thousand eight to twenty-twelve, August of those years...
It was.
It gets four years more.
Oh, okay.
Right, so it's... Two thousand sixteen?
Yeah. Or seventeen, if it's expiring now.
Yeah, it was expiring in two thousand twelve. We gave them one-year extension.
Two thousand thirteen.
So...
Yeah, so it's four more years.
So two thousand seventeen?
Yeah.
We hope that we're long gone and not refined.
What do you mean by that?
So we'll just draft...
What's that?
Do we have a separate issue we wanna discuss there?
Oh, you know, I thought I remembered something from that. Do you remember something from that subdivision?
Is, I mean, there was some issue with one subdivision. There was some communication between...
Guys, are we familiar with a noise issue going on there?
That's what it was.
Well, I understand that some, my gentleman wrote, Betsy, a wonderful letter with...
Oh, is that the recent one?
Address everything that...
Everything to the board.
You're gonna need a mic if you're gonna speak.
We'll have a challenge, whatever you like to do.
Okay.
Okay, grab a microphone.
Identify yourself.
There'll be a second one. Hold on to that.
You can each have microphones.
Address everything to the board. Don't crosstalk.
Introduce yourself, please. Name and address.
Paul Butters. I live on Kingsbury Road, right off back of this development. I did send a letter, and those weren't my words. They were the words of the guys that you have worked on that... These gentlemen have worked on that piece of property, and so that's what happened. And the letter is, I think, self-explanatory, as far as the language of what was used. It was threatening in nature. I think these gentlemen have a responsibility. Whoever's working that piece of property, that they worked in accordance to that permit. I'm talking about the earth removal, and they haven't been, and they know it, so...
Now, since you spoke to them, have...
There's been nobody out there since then.
There's been no one out there since?
Not that I know of.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, we're getting notified by Donna. Can you hold the mic up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's for the people at home, the thousands.
All right, now, did you speak to your contractor about this?
All the employees either work for Mike or myself that are on the site, number one. Number two, we've been blessed with our land going through the town of Norfolk and the town of Franklin. We have appropriate permits in each community. Across the street, where we're working, is the town of Franklin, which we have appropriate permits in. Across the street is the town of Norfolk, and we have appropriate permits in place with the community regarding earth removal. Now, this gentleman comes on our property. We have methods. Call the police, call the planning board, let them investigate. No confrontation coming in is wise, I don't think. And I wasn't there personally to find out what was said, and neither was Mike. So, I mean, again, if this gentleman has a problem, we have a method, and that isn't confrontation. At least, I don't think it is. Call the police. If we're in violation, I'm sure that we'll hear from you folks.
So I just went back to the question, though. Did you speak to your employees and ask them about what went on?
I did. We both did, and neither one of us got that kind of response. Actually, I didn't know who, what gentleman it was until this evening, but apparently he was the aggressor on our site. Again, this is private property that we're working on.
I drove up that road that cuts through there.
Which is a private way.
Well, this, that is used...
Don't crosstalk.
Okay, I'm sorry. If it's a private way, it should be either then blocked off, gated off, or there should be... The traffic uses that on a regular basis, so I didn't walk across their property. I did drive up that road, which is used by vehicular traffic pedestrians, you know, every day. And I was not the aggressor. What I said was, I believe that, these were to his workers, I believe that you're in violation of the earth removal permit out here. That there are restrictions on it as far as the hours you can be working, the days. And that's his worker. Get into my face, start a drop on the F-bomb. If you don't effing like it, you could... This is what he said. And I did call the police department, and I filed the noise complaints, and I believe that they're out there in violation of the terms and conditions on that.
You know what? Hours are definitely part of any order conditions of any approval, okay? And if they're operating outside those hours, I'm sure the police are actually empowered to act accordingly, okay? You know, I've been doing this for almost fifteen years between two different boards, and I couldn't tell if they violated the earth removal permit or not, because I'm not qualified to do it. It would take a measurement, so I don't see how any, you know, a butter could. No disrespect meant, it's just quantifying it.
Well, they're not allowed to start equipment before a certain time.
Time is one thing, amounts are another thing.
I think it's a timing thing.
Yeah, we were not starting equipment. We're allowed to work on the site from seven to five. We, earth removal is nine to five. They were screening loom on the site. That is not earth removal, when he drove in. So my son was there, and he said that he was gonna shut it down, and he's sick of hearing about us working over there. So I understand. He's a neighbor. I don't live there. He does, and I totally understand.
What's your order conditions of Franklin?
We're only there one day a week, on the average. Yes, and we don't start any machine before seven. Usually, it's ten past.
I don't know. Screening loom, I always think of that as part of the earth removal.
It is. Well, we're not taking it off-site. We're screening it for the site.
Well, can I, I can look at 'em right out through my, and trucks get loaded up, and that stuff goes off-site. One of the places I believe it's been taken to is right off of Myrtle, Myrtle Street, at the end of, Midway and Myrtle. Trucks come out of there and they go down the street. I've seen it. So to say it's not being removed...
Well, we have an earth removal permit.
After nine o'clock.
Anyway, but we haven't been delivering any...
Is Tony pulling dirt out of your site?
No, Tony's pulling it out of his own site, and he goes down our road, and then where he goes, you know, I don't follow.
I think he's been taken out to Bellican. There's a sign that says...
My point here is, we have a permit, and we have a procedure. If there's a violation, have this gentleman complain to Betsy in a proper fashion. We'd be more than happy to address it when we're called in before you. We don't appreciate having neighbors come onto our property and confronting our employees. Simple as that. I believe Norfolk still has a police department, doesn't it?
They do, and part of what we're doing right now is warning you now that there's been a complaint. We're gonna keep our eye on you.
That's correct. That's correct. We like the attention.
And most of our earth removal was for off-site.
You know what? We don't like the disfugality, for one, and secondly, you know, I think, so long as everybody understands the hours and the rules...
We do.
Hopefully, it's not gonna become an issue.
Can I ask a question, though? Is there a difference between site work and earth removal?
Yes.
Can I just, there doesn't, is site work in conjunction with a house actually about to be built? Because there's not, there's no activity that would indicate there's anything gonna happen in the near future. What's happening out there right now is basically a commercial sand and gravel operation, where stuff is being piled up and removed. There's no site work, per se, going on.
Now, I'm gonna take a ride out there myself this weekend. I don't know if anyone else wants to, but, wait. Which lots are we talking about there being an issue with? How far, it's on the right-hand side of the road as you're driving up it, right?
Well, if you take Miller Street and take a right onto Silver Fox, I believe is the name of the street. It's marked private way, but it's used all the time by traffic.
Silver Fox goes all the way out to Miller?
Yeah, and it goes right up.
It goes all the way to Pupillatic, also.
At some point there where you cross over into Franklin. And when I did ask the gentleman working out there, are you in Norfolk, are you in Franklin? They said, we're in Norfolk, is what they told me, so...
So how many lots up are we talking?
We have approximately four lots. We have five lots on that side of the street. We also have subdivision plans showing where we have to regrade, take the hills down and put it into some of the valleys. And we have been doing that, so the gravel has been disappearing from one area, and we push it into another area. We didn't, we already have terms and conditions.
That's part of earth removal. That's what it's referred to as.
Well, it's moving earth. It's not taking it off-site.
It's not taking, we're on Norfolk property.
Don't go by your definitions. Go by our definitions.
Actually, it's a three-dimensional relocation, I believe.
So can I ask?
We're moving dirt around, we're moving dirt on our own property during the paired, normal workday in the town of Norfolk.
Just pay attention to what you're doing, because those restrictions are there for a specific reason.
But it says, it says on our, that Betsy gave me a copy of, it says we can work on the site from seven to five. But earth removal is nine to five. Now, what would work and site be? If you're pushing dirt and subgrading a road like everybody else does in a subdivision, is that earth removal? How do you, what would you do from seven to nine, then? There's no, there's no... I mean, you could tell me. I mean, you guys are the boss.
We'll have to reread the earth removal permit ourselves, but just pay attention to the fact that there's been a complaint.
I understand. And he lives there. We don't. I understand where the gentleman's coming from.
Let me put this on the table. You know, my understanding in terms of the hours with earth removal beginning at nine AM is because of school buses and such trying to get that traffic, you know, off the road before you have the heavy equipment and such. So let's put that aside, and let's just talk in practical terms. I mean, I think it's always a good idea to try to be a good neighbor and try to work, you know...
I understand.
And so what I would just ask is regardless of what's on the permit, you know, try to see if you can, you know, mitigate the situation. And I don't know what I'm asking for, 'cause I haven't visited the site, but if there's anything you can do to ameliorate the problem here, please do it, regardless of what's on your permit.
Normally after three-thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, we work from seven to three-thirty. So it doesn't go an hour and a half as it is till five o'clock. That's normally what we do, the way we work it. And we are working on both sides of the street. As some of you might remember, I don't know whether any of you were on the board when we had the permit approved, but part of it's in Franklin, part of it's in Norfolk. The way the crow flies is the way the line was written, and we think we're adhering to and cooperating with the community and trying to be a good neighbor. Again, as far as that road being open, I would just as soon close it myself. However, with the community in Franklin and the community in Norfolk, police and fire and emergency vehicles.
School buses.
It has become a very prominent way of getting over to Pupillatic and on the other side of Norfolk, also.
And also with the town, we've been a very good neighbor. We gave the town of Norfolk an easement for your water situation down on Leland Road. We just hooked up for Bob McGee. We just hooked up Franklin Water onto Norfolk Water to boost the pressure down on Miller Street and that whole area, so we've been a good neighbor. And I understand where the gentleman's coming from. He lives there. I don't. And we're trying to be a good neighbor.
You haven't been a good neighbor, 'cause I live right next to your piece of property. And the way I was treated by these guys, that's not being a good neighbor.
I think, you know what, we can't, you know, we...
And that's the way they work.
Well, here's the deal.
I'd rather call the police.
Guys...
I did go down to police.
You know what, we're not getting any further here, just basically talking at each other.
We weren't there. Mike and I weren't there. Again, I don't know what was said to by either gentleman in the conversation. Alls I can say to you is, Mr. Chipman, is the gentleman had been trespassing on our property, not the other way around.
I guess, you know what, and that's an accommodation that you've made by your own admission to the entire neighborhood.
Actually, the roadway may go, but the machine is not on the road. The machine was on into the property. For him to get out and go onto the property, that's a different...
I never left my, I drove my pickup. I never got out of it. I know this issue might come up, that I'm trespassing, so I didn't, I didn't. I use the same road like this, and the school buses.
Okay, here, in the future...
Right in my backyard.
In the future, do it through the police department. You're gonna have to call the police department. Don't go over there and get yourself in trouble. Do it through the police. We'll make sure that the police know that there's a restriction on the hours and let them know what the hours are supposed to be.
Well, this has been going on for a couple of years, and there's a...
And the more often you call the police, the quicker they'll probably respond.
Excuse me, there's a pilot dirt about fifty feet high that, are they supposed to, when they start powder, are they supposed to...
That's the same hill that was there when we purchased the property. You can check the plans.
No, this has been...
You know how to read them, number one.
All right, all right.
His condescending attitude is the attitude that...
Talking to each other.
So that this gentleman doesn't come onto my property again without being arrested. It's as simple as that. We're not in violation. If he wants to file a complaint with the police, that's the proper venue. Then we can take it up with you, if in fact we're in violation.
Well, I did file a complaint with the police.
Is that, if this has been going on two years, and every morning at seven o'clock...
It's not every morning.
It's not every morning. We've been there for... Let me understand that.
Oh, two weeks we haven't been there.
Talk to me. How often? What's happening?
We're there maybe one day a week. We're doing curbing now. We're doing sidewalks now. We're gonna get ready for paving.
I have not spoken to this gentleman ever.
Not him. Your guy. You must have spoken to your guy.
Yeah, he did. We did.
And he told you what kind of language he used?
The story that we got was not what was related by this gentleman.
You know, and it is three sides of the story. His side, our side, and the truth, so we'll talk to our gentleman tomorrow.
I don't have to believe, man. I'm telling you, I wouldn't have put that in writing and signed my name to it if that was not what happened.
That's a police matter.
Yeah, I mean, let the police handle it. I don't wanna argue with everybody.
But do we really wanna start, like, scrutinizing every drop of dirt, everything else?
No, no, no.
Well, that's why we have a permit.
I understand, but you know what? Permits, in reality, don't always line up. We don't wanna get to that point.
Yeah, right. I agree.
So...
Well...
Play nice. That's all we can say.
The thing with the working at seven o'clock, I mean, to get subs in there paving, and you guys would know yourself, if you're doing paving, sidewalks, curbing, all the stuff that went on one fifteen, nobody starts at nine o'clock. No subs are gonna come in and start at nine o'clock. I mean, everybody in the construction industry starts at seven o'clock. We've had it down to one fifteen and that whole area for three years down there. I mean, they're not starting at nine o'clock.
You know, and I...
You won't remove earth until after nine o'clock, and that's very seldom.
And removal of...
You've been in there all winter.
And the removal of earth restriction is exactly for what Jeff said.
Yeah.
It's not to have conflicting with normal commuter traffic, school bus traffic, things like that.
Right. That's why it's nine o'clock.
Is there a gray area between pushing it around and throwing it in the back of a truck and bringing it over to Myrtle? Just don't do it before nine.
That is a must.
That is a must. Tony goes through the Marinella.
But don't...
Wish it was, you know...
Or whoever's it is, just don't ever come up your site before nine. Whoever's it is. Just don't ever come up to our site before 9:00.
I'm not getting paid for it, so I didn't deliver it.
Okay.
I think we've got it nailed down.
I hope.
Yeah, I hope so, too.
We will make an attempt to try to accommodate and be more cognizant of our neighbors, including this gentleman.
We would appreciate that, yeah.
And we will do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, meanwhile, don't we even take a vote on this, on the extension, or is it-
Do you wanna extend it, or do we need to extend it?
We don't really, we don't have to extend it.
Just put it in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Or we can send him a memo.
Did Mount Patrick extended it?
Did you wanna, did you wanna just send him a memo? If you wanna just draft a little memo that says, "We discussed it, and it's extended," and you can give the exact date that it's extended to. Any new business? Toils End Road, A&R and Endorse Mile R. What's this? Toils End Road? What part of Toils End Road?
Across the street from the previous one.
Across the street from the previous one. What?
Remember Mr. Prezuti?
Yeah.
This estate lot and two A&R lots.
Oh, 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 okay. Off of Grove Street.
Yes, off of that side of Toils End.
Well, it goes from, from Rentham to Medway or, no, Milford.
Does it really?
Yeah.
It goes that far.
Yeah.
Wasn't this even voted at a town meeting? Wasn't there, because-
Yeah, the, the street was accepted at town meeting up to, up to that part.
But we haven't signed the A&R?
Well, the, the in-house of the lot.
It's new. It's new.
They're creating two new lots out on it.
Oh, oh, oh.
Here are the houses. There's the existing house. Here's this state lot. Here's this one. Here's, like, Mike Thimlins' lot.
They're actually, it's two lots now, but they're horizontally oriented. One with a, just a thin strip out to Toils End Road, and he's just reorienting them to be compliant with current zoning.
Now, you're saying which? They don't, a thin strip where?
No, well, that's the new, that's the new plan.
Oh, okay.
The original lots had, you see how there's a jog on the left side?
A 20-foot jog?
Yes.
Okay.
That was originally access to the back half of the two lots. They were, they were combined as one lot, the back half.
Oh, okay.
Oh, what, it went this way?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Didn't they buy one of them off, like, in a state bounty hunter, a guy that basically makes his living?
Oh, really?
Owner unknowns, yeah.
Oh, wow.
And he ended up buying a piece off to create two lots.
Wow. Boy, they're really packing them down this little road all of a sudden.
Actually, that's a lot, actually, I was out there looking at that house the other day, up here in the state lot.
Yeah.
It's actually, I think putting these two houses here is really gonna make it nice.
I do, too. I think it's a nice setting.
I would love to be able to just connect it all the way through.
Well, talk to the homes. The other one with the 80 acres.
So, there's, there's no question with this, then?
No, there were a couple of minor technical things which have been fixed, so it's fine.
So, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan of land on Toils End Road, prepared for Toils End Trust, 336 South Street, Hyannis, Mass., dated June 10th, 2013.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have a mile hour also?
Yep, mile hour.
Oh, is this one of the ones that we have to sign here?
Sure.
What else do we have here? CPC appointment.
Didn't we agree we'd postpone that until after we settle the, uh?
Yes, yes, we did. Vouchers? Did you have vouchers? Are you, have you already circulated them?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Meeting minutes? Oh, I was gonna read those, wasn't I?
Why?
I forgot all about those.
It's Walter's job.
No, 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 no. There's a couple here that, that he wasn't here for. Oh, and the, the hearings for the associate member, the Board of Selectmen would like to have it as a single meeting. Now, do we have a particular date that we might like to do it with them? They meet every Tuesday?
Every other.
What, Donna, do you know when the next meeting is?
Tuesday. Next week.
Yeah, that's a little soon. Oh, thanks. So, next week is the 25th, right?
Yeah.
So, what's, what's July there, Michelle? Well, so they're-
That week you're not around, right?
The ninth, or the 23rd?
The 25th?
This is the mile hour.
Nine, 23rd, either.
Does anyone, how, how do you guys feel about the 23rd? Are you around that week, or is that the week you're not?
I'm the one who's not.
Oh, you're, do you mind if, if, if we, uh?
It's a problem for me, too, the 23rd.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm available right up to that week, but it's a problem.
Just let her out there. Same day as our meeting, Monday, the 15th.
They, they could invite them to ours.
Yeah, we could invite them to ours. That's a good idea.
I saw it on TV.
Why don't you, why don't you ask them if they want to come to our meeting on the 15th? That might be, that's a really good idea.
Yeah, that is a good idea. I like that one.
He signed it?
Another one? There was something else.
Oops, sorry.
What was the other thing that, oh, oh, the-
So, we need to sign the mile hour?
No, we, we have to have another person to go on this small little subcommittee that is being put together by, it's a joint subcommittee from the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. And it's for, to look at any issues with stop and shop and to try to entice them to construct the building or to construct something or to do something with the property. Now, we have one volunteer, and it's Walter, and Peter can't do it. So, do either of you guys wanna, um, do that?
You.
Michelle, did you wanna, um, work on that one?
I am definitely interested in it. My only concern is with the, and it's sort of a pro and a con. It's my lack of history and knowledge of the, of the issues going on over there. And, you know, the good part about it is I can bring a fresh perspective, you know, with a bag. And I think the bad part about it is, what I was thinking that night when we met with the Board of Selectmen was, it would be great to be as strategic as possible going into that meeting, and being strategic means you understand all the issues so that you can, you know, present yourself properly. So, that's my only reservation. I am very interested, and that's just my only concern. And I know that Jeff does have a lot more history.
Are you interested in it, Jeff?
No, to be honest with you, I, I think Michelle would represent the board.
I thought so, too.
Well, I, I do, Michelle, and if there's any perspective, you know, we'll certainly speak myself.
Any history. You can be filled in on any history.
We'll, 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 we'll make sure.
There's the history. They've had a permit for six years that they haven't built, and the crosswalk, that's the history.
Yeah. And if, and if you need somebody else to participate because you can't make it to one of the meetings or something, if I'm available, I'll jump in.
Yeah, that would be my only other concern, would be time commitment, but I don't think it would be.
No, 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 no. They're separate issues. We've, we've decided to maintain them as completely separate issues.
Bring your own group.
Yeah. That's why they have it.
My only other concern would be time commitment, but I don't think we're gonna be bogged down in lots of meetings on this, so I don't-
No, I don't think so either.
I don't think it being a huge time sap, so.
So, yeah. They're trying to find some way to approach stop and shop and get them to commit to something. That's, that's kind of what the whole thing is.
Well, actually, I think the first action we have to do is all agree on a common objective, because I don't think we have a common objective.
Well, that's what, that's what the three of you are gonna discuss right away. That's, and you'll bring it back.
Absolutely. What is it? Because if we ask five people, you get five different answers.
That's why there's always three people involved between the two boards.
So, we'll have three objectives.
What are we doing with this flag poles?
We're gonna schedule a special permit.
Flag pole? What? Do we want a flag on it?
Oh, there it is.
Well, I mean, I, they've always had a permit.
Uh, it expired. I never renewed it.
Oh, okay.
With the zoning board. Now, it's permitted through the planning board.
Who is, uh, who's the carrier?
You kick him off, you could get in trouble.
T-Mobile. T-Mobile.
Okay.
Interestingly, they don't seem to be proposing any changes, just, just renewal. When all the other sites, they're changing the antennas out.
They're adding to it?
Or, or adding to it.
Yeah, usually, they change the technology at this point.
I've, I've heard that they're going to smaller coverage, but more frequent repeaters. That's how it seems, the technology seems to be going.
Google's trying to do balloons. Google's trying to do balloons.
Yeah.
Yes.
For Wi-Fi in New Zealand.
Well, third world countries, they don't balloons.
They started in New Zealand.
They don't have any poles.
Got it for, he said, five minutes or something, and then the balloon got off range.
Balloons.
He checked the weather, he said, though, because they only get the weather.
Well, they said that they, they know all the air currents, and they raise and lower the balloon to try to direct it so that they know which way the balloon should go at different heights so that they can keep it in a, in a specific location.
Noah has a site down where I live in the Cape, and they regularly put up weather balloons there. It's pretty cool to watch, so.
All right. Did we, um, do we have anything else? I think we've covered everything. Is there anything else that we haven't left out, that we've left out?
Well, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't wanna schedule this hearing for the same 15th, on the 15th?
For-
Yeah, we didn't schedule.
It should be pretty straightforward, since they're not-
Oh, a public hearing for the meeting house. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, you know what? Your last agenda item, Steve, here for our next meeting. Ken Brown had, had called me, and I just referred him to Betsy on this. He wants to come in, so you know, to remove the frontage road requirement from colonial fence. That's his request for the site plan modification. Just so you know.
Is that a minor modification?
That's something for the board to take up when it's a duly posted agenda item.
Well, I guess we should have Betsy schedule these for the next round, right?
Is there enough time for it to advertise on the public hearing?
Well, it's- Well, we have to act on it first, so.
It's more than two weeks away.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So, the agenda items for the next week, for the next meeting, we're gonna have those scheduled for the 15th, the same as the-
When do you wanna, what time you want to schedule this, um, public hearing for the, um?
The flag?
Flag pole.
We have one at 7:45 for Conville.
Yeah, that's gonna be at least 45 minutes.
You want to schedule it for 8:30?
8:30, yeah. We'll still probably be a little bit late, but-
Unlike the flag pole in most people's front yards, this one is 90 feet high.
It's been there forever, though.
And it should have a 30-foot flag on it.
Yeah, I think there's a specific condition that says they were, they're to put the flag up and down every day or something like that.
Really? Unless it's not lit.
Unless it's lit. That's right.
That's flag.
Yeah, that's regular flag. Exactly.
Right. I mean, we have a light at Pond Street with the flag right there.
That's law.
Well.
So, who would do that?
Well, they would have to put a light.
You, you light it or put it up and down every day.
It's right over there.
They would light it, obviously.
All right. And that's privately owned or leased, right? That site?
That's privately owned, I believe.
Yeah, it's Borelli's.
No, 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 but he has a lease.
Oh, he has a lease for the site. Yes, yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have one more thing. I have four sets of minutes, two from April.
Yeah, we already looked at those. I, I had said that, uh, oh, no.
No, 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 no. I reviewed them this past week, so.